I think it's six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. For our agenda tonight, I just, I've been looking over some things and talking with Dalton, and we are gonna have to do an amended budget calendar to make sure we get things done in a timely manner. Dalton wanted to do that first, but if it would be okay with you. We talked to fire department and police department last night, and Ronnie Snow from the Marina did not get his chance. So, just in case he doesn't want to stay for the rest of the night, I was, if it's okay with y'all, we'll just start with Ronnie.
Okay, the corner by the house boats, A dock, that corner just over there, last five years it's been bending. Well, when they did our inspection in June, they put it down as an emergency that has to be done. So, and I mean, we're still coming, I think they said it was gonna come back through September, October. I talked to Carrie, I know somebody mentioned floating D and E dock, and we were gonna do that in a CIP, wasn't it? CIP meeting, I think, in December something, we decided, or whatever, look at that. And I've got that in there too. And on that one there, from 21, I think y'all only got 22 and, I wanna say 22 and 23s. But between 20, I found one that Bud had done in 21, between 21 and 23, those three bids, it went up $92,000. So, but the one that, that's really, that the first page, that dock repair and redecking the bridge and stuff, that one through number six, that top ones, those are an emergency one that's gotta be done as soon as we can, because if it breaks, and if you, there's a little map on the back too that'll show you the numbers on there. They found some more broken braces and stuff, just through the years, through the inspection. And those were included in the one through six. The seven, the next one down, the bridge one, there's two of them, one of them putting metal decking where people been slipping on the concrete. And we unhooked the high water walkway the other day because there's so much weight with them white bricks on there that they make aluminum one, and that, this is be doing that with aluminum, plus it's non-skin. So, it'll take a bunch of the weight, they said that's what's tearing our Marina apart, the weight. And with that being said, I just want to make sure we keep enough back, and that y'all are aware that I'll probably be coming back, 'cause we're, two weeks ago, we hit a 50-year low on the lake. So, we're 50 years, since they raised it up pool, at what, 25 feet? So, since 73, we're as low as we've ever been. I just want y'all to be aware that I'll be coming back with y'all proudly with some emergency stuff.
Seven and eight?
Yes, yes, yes. And then, but the top one is something I am gonna have to have done, like, they want, they said we need to do it before it breaks. And once it breaks, it's emergency, and it's got all of our cables and electrical and stuff hooked up. But that $22,000 is not counting unhooking the electrical. We were hoping maintenance could do that, but we haven't talked to them. So, I just wanted y'all to be aware of what I've got going on down there.
Okay, so are you, because my understanding is Dalton has full authority when an emergency comes up, especially if we get written into our third party, so you don't need our approval on this?
Okay, I just want y'all to have heads up that y'all going through this.
That's a question.
No, no, no.
Okay.
My bad. That we threw up a temporary solution. We wanted to make sure that we had something that, again, planning kind of for the future, that we had some, one, modularity where we can take it down, put it back up if we need to. But we also wanted to make sure we didn't just throw something up for other liabilities that it could create. So, yes, we, with emergency funding, we absolutely would, and typically the process for council on that would be similar to this. Even though we can't necessarily vote on it today, 'cause it's not on the agenda, we would do the repairs, we would bring that to our council, and then just talk like this. So, with this, we'll probably put this on the August agenda. We'll go ahead and get the, everything executed, and then just put it in front of council, either in consent agenda or discuss it.
And the rest we'll go over during the CIP.
Yes, sir.
I think y'all said September.
Probably November, November timeframe.
Just to be absolutely clear, 'cause, you know, I'm dense. We're not gonna, you guys aren't gonna wait to do that until we can say something in August. You're gonna go ahead and get it done as soon as you can.
Yes, yes, sir.
Did I understand you correctly?
So, so, yes, so with, with what we call, and this is where, where it's really important as far as kind of what we define as emergency. Obviously, we don't take emergency stuff lightly, but when it comes to, obviously, life, lemon, property, and the Marina being that it's a substantial piece of property and asset, we would make those decisions, you know, quickly and then immediately. And of course, in that conversation, we're not operating in a vacuum. In the same breath, we would be executing the document. I'd usually be on the phone with the mayor, and then we would have an email sent out to all the council just saying, hey, this is what's going on. And again, depending on how big of an emergency it was. So, there's gonna be constant communication.
I just wanted to clarify that.
And then the administrative thing. But again, we don't, we don't abuse that by any means. We make sure that if it is an emergency, we factor in what we would consider life, lemon, or property.
Ronnie, the wooden steps that go down from the upper parking lot? It's been a while since I've been down there. They were ta, caution taped off or something?
Yes.
Are those falling apart too?
They are now. Yeah.
Yes, and we've, we've talked to Ronnie about that one. Sorry, Ronnie, we, we've talked about that. I think that's gonna be a CIP one, 'cause some of the, some of the challenges, even though we're at a 50-year low, and we've talked to Ronnie about this, is we also have to start looking at erosion control throughout the city, you know, under the 642 line. And so, all those projects, we gotta really sit down, and that's a big, big goal for us this year, is to make sure we get projects and stuff to the core, so we can start the six-month to year and a half approval process to get it done. So, with the stairs, you know, maintenance has done a great job at repairing them over the years, but they just keep getting worse and worse. And now, it's gotten to the point where, unfortunately, I made the decision with Ronnie and them, you know, of course, to not spend time, effort, energy, or money into it because of the liability should somebody walk down and something bad happen. So, yes, it needs to be addressed. We definitely have to figure out something, and I think that could be either, either a CIP thing or something that we can look at, you know, during the year.
So, thank you, Ronnie.
Well, thank y'all for giving me a chance to.
Bringing that and giving this. And so, what I'd like to clarify and say, from what I understand, and Dalton, you correct me if I'm wrong, these first steps, one through eight, that are listed on this first page, are the emergency plan that we're gonna go forward with?
One through six?
One through six?
Yes.
And not seven and eight?
Not yet on seven and eight. They gotta wait till the lake comes back up. And like I said, every day, it's something different. There's another float that broke off three days ago. So, as this, we're the all-time low, like I said, so every day, something's shifting and moving. So, we're trying to stay ahead of it.
We're gonna look to get one through six done now without any further vote. Seven and eight will come up on the CIP plan.
Yes, ma'am.
And the floating, the dock that needs to be floated, of the two that you have left, we can discuss that at the CIP plan also.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that clear?
Yes, ma'am, and what we'll look at, and as we dive into CapEx outside of the details, we'll kind of talk about what that looks like, and some of our rationale on choosing funding, or whatever the decisions that we kind of, our thought process on it, we can kind of talk about that, so.
Sounds great, thanks, Ronnie.
Thank y'all for giving me a chance.
Ronnie.
Y'all have a good night.
You're welcome to stay, but I didn't want to make you sit all night again. Okay, then, next, I just, we need to talk about the emergency, I mean, the, the plan for the calendar for the budget for the rest of the year. And then, I would, I would like to suggest that we go review last night and all of the appointments and things that were brought up, and just kind of see if we want those in the budget or not. And then, we can move forward with salaries and the next capital expenditures, if that's okay with y'all.
Yeah, one thing that would help me, Dalton, you handed out new organizational charts last night. And before we get into the weeds, as Dalton says, but, you know, can we take that look at one page, the organizational chart? 'Cause I think you have it color-coded between new positions and existing positions.
And we, and we actually revamped that one completely to try to clean it up and make it more user-friendly, to kind of clean up some of the confusion, you know, like on the ACM or CM position. So, the ones y'all did get, I think, are the new ones or should be?
We just got them last night.
Yes, those, okay, those are the new ones. Those are the new ones, so, yes.
All right, let's talk dates.
Is it worth a minute to take big picture and say?
Let's talk dates first, then we'll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, so, we are actually gonna be, I think everybody should have the budget timeline in front of y'all. So, the first question is, what's everybody's vacation schedule for August? When is, when is everybody coming back? Will everybody be back, or who's gonna be gone the week of the 21st through the 28th? Whew, all right, so here's the dilemma that we're running into. Basically, I found, actually, here, let me start with the good news first. The good news is, is we have until the 28th because of the de minimis rate and the special requirement. So, I've been diving into tax code all day today, been diving into every single possible thing to figure out what ultimate loopholes that we have. So, the good news is, is we have until the 28th to adopt the tax rate. The other good news is, is we can pretty much, even on the 21st, we can still adopt the budget, which is the deadline to adopt the budget, 'cause it doesn't require a 60% of all of council. It just requires a, a majority of council members present. Here's where the sticking point comes in. The deadline for the tax rate adoption is August 28th, and it requires two-thirds of all members of council, meaning two members are out.
We cannot vote on that tonight?
Nope, because all of it has to be by notice of public hearing, and so.
So, we have a public hearing scheduled for the 8th?
We, we don't.
I saw that on some schedule.
So, so, the pub, because of, because of the budget hearing last night that we didn't do, 'cause we moved it to tonight, the process starts back over. So, really, so.
We should've known that consequence.
Well, everything kind of happened at the very end very quickly, and so by the time all of that kind of unfolded, at that point, it was, it was, it was too late. So, basically, 10, 10 days.
You have something coming in on Thursday, right? That's gonna give us whatever that tax levy rate or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's coming in on Thursday.
Yeah, so let me, let me pull, let me pull up my calendar. Oh, I'm pulling up my calendar right now. Let's see. So, if we, today's the second, if we put in a notice of public hearing for basically Friday, which is ultimately the earliest that we can get it, or the budget.
This Friday?
This Friday the 4th. Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on. That's just where we can submit it to the paper, which triggers the 10-day mark. So, we have to wait 10 full days before we can do the budget hearing, which if we do it on the 4th, it would put it on the 14th. So, the 14th would be the earliest, technically speaking, that we could do the budget hearing. Now, again, the budget hearing is a moot point. We don't need, yeah, well, so, well, so, so, the rub is not the budget, the rub is not the budget adoption or the budget hearing. The rub is gonna be the tax rate, because.
So, if four people are here, we can vote that tax rate in on the 14th?
The mayor doesn't count towards it, it has to be four aldermen.
Okay, are the four of you gonna be here on the 14th, was it?
Oh, it's, so, hold on, so the 14th is only for the budget. So, the 14th would be the budget hearing. The 21st, the 21st is the deadline for, for the budget. So, basically, and what I'm giving you guys is the earliest possible days that we can do this. Yeah, so. Yeah, so let's stick. Okay, so the tax rate is the last thing that you do, and we have until the 28th to do it.
Of August?
Of August. So, that was a change from the 21st of August. The tax rate is the one where you have to have 60% of all members of council vote. So, the, the rule is, the rule is, it has to be five days, no earlier than five days after, let me back up. The budget has to be adopted before you can do the tax rate. No, the final budget has to be adopted. So, the budget has to be adopted before you approve it. So, this is why it kind of is, I'm going, I'm kind of jumping back and forth between budget and, and tax rate? Okay, okay, so. So, the early, yes, so the, so the earliest that we can do the budget hearing would be the 14th, which is that Monday. We can put in for the tax rate hearing, it's gotta be five days, you have to, we have to put the notice in five days before the tax rate hearing. So, the earliest that we would be able to approve the tax rate would be the 15th of August. Okay, so, yeah, if, if, if we're here on the 15th, then we can make this work. 8:15 would be the special session to, to approve the tax rate, ratify the tax rate, basically, anything and everything with the tax rate. So, special session on the 14th would be approving, it would, it would be the budget hearing, and you can approve the budget that night, 'cause remember, an action has to be taken. So, you guys can actually approve the budget, and then the 15th would be a special session. No, no, 15th, nothing can be done on the 8th. The 8th is, that ship has sailed. Yeah, yeah, that, that's.
Notification.
Because of the notification period. So, on the 15th special session, that would be the tax rate hearing and approving the tax rates, and then we're done. And you, and you have to have four aldermen there.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, yeah, so it would have to, it has to be, to, great, great, great point. You know, now, that is, that, that is, that is a great, yes, it has to be, it has to be, 60% of, of all the members have to vote in favor of the budget in order for it, or, sorry, in favor of the tax rate in order for it to pass.
Okay, so, will all four, will all, will the four of you plan to be here those days?
Four, 60%, 60% of all members. So, it's a, it's a super, it's a super majority. So, it has to be four, 'cause it comes out to 3.67, and the state rounds up.
It has to be four.
So, it has to be four people.
So, we just need to set a date when, when four of you can be here.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, what I want to kind of talk about is, is what would happen if we don't do that? So, just so we know the. No, 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 that's, that's county stuff, because the budget ideally is adopted. So, the budget, in a way, is a moot point, but the way that the law states is the budget has to be adopted before the tax rate. So, y'all don't necessarily have to adopt a budget, and, and yes, to a certain extent, a lot of home rule cities charters, they say it, but there's really not state statute that defines the budget or how that operates. However, from a tax rate perspective, if we miss the 28th deadline, you actually have until September 30th to adopt a tax rate. The lesser of the no new revenue tax rate or last year's preceding tax rate, which means that it would go down to 52 cents or whatever the no new revenue tax rate is. You cannot go to the voter approval rate or anything beyond the no new revenue tax rate. So, that's the alternative.
So, Thursday or Friday, you get the magic numbers from the county?
Uh, yes, that, yeah, we, we'll be hitting them up tomorrow. Oh, yeah, we'll be hitting them up tomorrow.
Okay. So, once you get those numbers in, you crunch them, and then we could, even though we can't have a hearing on it, a hearing, hearing, we could have a workshop that says, okay, these are how the numbers work out, and this is where we think it's gonna go.
Oh, yeah, y'all can workshop.
And that can be, we don't have to wait until the notification. We can have a, a working session to talk about it. No voting. Got that. But then, we can say, okay, five days after, why don't we do the notification tomorrow?
Well, we, we could put it in there, but you, you can't get it into the paper. So, like, even if we left tonight, or even if we got it in tonight, it's not gonna be in the paper by tomorrow.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not suggesting that, I'm just, you said you could put it in like Friday.
Yeah, so we'll put it in tomorrow, so it'll be in the paper on Friday.
Okay.
So, it's 10 days from the day that it's in the paper.
So, anyway, if we can figure out what is the, the numbers look like.
The Belt and Journal only comes out on Thursday.
We, we use Temple Daily if we need to do daily.
Okay.
So, it seems to me that we can, without being illegal or stupid, we can kind of get this ahead of the game, and then have the hearing at the earliest possible time.
Yeah, if, if.
Just to meet all kinds of calendars and meet the.
If, if the 14th and 15th, we have the, the numbers in the quorum, crisis averted, so.
They can go on the website too, right?
Yeah, all, all that's part of the requirement stuff, but it can't, it doesn't, that doesn't start the, it's the paper that starts the timeline.
Yeah.
So, we need to find out.
Didn't we vote on our first meeting, the Belt and Journal being our?
Yes, so every city will vote on, on which news source they, they can use. However, because it is only a weekly news source, cities have, you know, obviously discretion should we need to put something in the journal. Otherwise, if y'all want to stick with only using the Belt and Journal, then we're back into crisis mode. But, yes, so we, we do use discretion on situations like this, where if it is a time crunch or certain things, really, even if we use Belt and Journal, we typically will put it into Temple Daily because it has higher circulation.
So, we can go forward tonight and vote on anything that we want in or out of the budget? We can approve these positions, can we not do that?
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, that's the whole point, is, is y'all getting, 'cause then we can put all the numbers in and get it ready.
If we could get as much of the homework done before next Tuesday, even if it's not shown until, until budget time, then we would have it ready to go, and you all would feel comfortable running the budget hearing and going forward with that.
Yep.
So, I think that.
But it would just be a tax rate hearing, it wouldn't be a budget hearing.
Well, the budget hearing will be on the 14th.
Oh, the budget hearing will be on the 14th.
Yeah, so budget hearing and budget.
You have to have that before you can do the tax rate, right?
Correct.
Finally got it right.
You have it up there, hold up.
Maybe.
8:14, okay. And it, that's the earliest, but it could be later than that, right?
So, if, in order to, based off of like vacation and scheduling, if y'all are leaving the 16th, then the 15th is our deadline.
Okay, so, Jimbo, will you be here on the 14th?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as you know, you will be, Stephen, and you, okay.
The 15th is the.
Looks like we'll have four here.
Okay, the 15th is the crucial date for the four.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's, let's, everybody put that on your calendar for the 14th?
Yeah, yes, so, yeah, we did the tentative one based off of, we'll call it, I'm calling it the doomsday one, like the last, so we will get an updated budget one. So, really, what we need from y'all is gonna be, basically, tonight, setting the date and time in place for the budget hearing, which is gonna be the 14th here at 6:00 PM or whatever time y'all want, and then setting the date and time for the tax rate, which technically, we can do that on, on August 8th. But if you do it now, then we can lock it in, get all the notices out, and be done.
So, we can do the tax rate now?
No, you're, you're, all you're doing is setting the date, time, and location for the hearings, and when you're going to adopt the tax rate.
Okay.
So, that'll be, so the tax rate, so the first motion would be, would need to be for setting the date and time for the budget hearing, which would, is, we're recommending the 14th. Okay, so that'll be the first motion.
What does that mean? Like, we're gonna have a special session for 8:14?
Yes.
We're gonna have the notice of public hearing, or we're gonna have the public hearing. What else can they do afterwards?
They have to, well, y'all, an act, remember, an action has to be taken at the budget hearing on the budget. So, you have two options. You have one, you can postpone it until the 15th, or you can adopt the budget the night of the 14th. But, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna answer your question. But, you cannot adopt the tax rate until the budget is adopted.
Okay, but if we do that on the 14th?
Yes.
So, if we forward the information, 'cause we got all next week to, to work. I mean, you're gonna get the numbers, hopefully, tomorrow or Thursday, or Friday. So, somewhere that next week, I mean, we're gonna meet on the 8th, we could talk about, can we not talk about?
Yeah, we're planning on a two-hour workshop before council that.
So, then we could talk about it then, right?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So, then on the 14th, without being stupid about it, I mean, you're gonna have a hearing, and people are gonna come in and want to talk, but if, if we've already gone through it, most of that, we're gonna sort it out before the public hearing, and then take, you know, if Joe comes in with a better idea, we'll certainly address that.
Yeah, y'all, I mean, the.
Our only, compelling, yeah.
The only, yeah, the only buffer, the only buffer that, that would be there would be a day, you know, would be one day. So, if y'all take an action and be like, hey, we wanna, you know, redo some stuff on the budget, whatever, let's postpone it until the night of the 15th. Y'all can have the tax rate hearing, adopt the budget.
72-hour notice then?
As long as we plan ahead on it, we don't have to, which we're going to.
We can already, we can say also, that's been covered, it's been decided on, on the 14th.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Y'all have to cover that at this meeting. I mean, you know, it can be on the agenda and posted.
Yeah, so we, we will, we will cover.
As much as possible on the agenda, if it's not on there, we can't talk about it.
Yeah, so we will, we will cover our bases for the 14th and the 15th with all the notices, with all the agendas, with everything. Really, just the, the bottom line doomsday date because of travel and vacation is the 15th. If it doesn't happen by the 15th, or an emergency session, which this would not count, count for an emergency session on the 16th, you know, prior to people leaving, then we pretty much can expect to adopt the no new revenue tax rate.
Jim, is that getting with your schedule and your thoughts?
Yeah, I like that. I'm not a fan of, you know, delaying and postponing what we have. It's a compressed timeline, obviously, but I think it works.
And I think it's important to remember, like Dennis said last night, that even if we approve this, we can say, you know, we're holding on this, and we're holding on that, and we will revisit that January 1st or whatever. So, it's not like in cement. I mean, it is, you have to take action to do anything about it, but, you know, if we, you know, if we just can't wrestle it to the ground, then we'll just say we can't wrestle it to the ground.
Yeah.
We'll take it out of the budget until we can wrestle it to the ground.
Is there something obvious that we're missing? And it looks like it, if.
I'd like to see more.
If we do that, and that, and that, then we oughta be like, okay, we're done.
Yeah, if, if we stick to the 14th and 15th timeline, crisis averted, so.
Do we need to motion?
Um, so, do, do a motion just on the date, time, and location for the budget hearing, for the 14th?
Do you have a motion? Okay, second?
Yeah, a motion to accept the budget hearing at 6:00 PM on the 14th.
At what location?
Uh, here.
Yeah, okay, and it was seconded by Stephen, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's the date, all right.
And then, next, we'll be setting the date, time, and location for the tax rate hearing and approving the tax rate.
Okay, that would be August 8, 15.
So, the motion would be, I would like to make a motion, August 15th for our tax rate hearing, starting at 6:00 PM, followed by the approval.
And adopt, yes, 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 yes.
Followed by the approval at this location.
Second?
Currently, right now.
Those are both 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, or whatever time y'all want.
6 is.
6 worked.
Stephen's still. Good for you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will send out an updated or revised, revised timeline for it. So, awesome, all right, so crisis averted, we're good to go.
Thanks. Next thing I want you to talk about, Dalton, is the organizational chart.
Can I just ask one more thing?
Absolutely.
Um, if we're doing all this to get the tax rate done, do we want to take a moment? And Carrie just gave us some new information on tax rates. Do we want to stick with the 58 cents? Or do we want to talk about, this might be the year, as Carrie mentioned, with BISD taxes going down, that we could kind of slip through without significant consternation to the residents, because it would be a minor increase for them, 2 cents. I don't know what that would be in their tax rate, Carrie might know. But anyway, do we want to stop for? I'm suggesting, do we want to stop for a minute and say, do we want to stay with 58 cents? Or is now, if Dalton's saying, these staffing plans are our future, this is what I need, and da, 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 do we want to go ahead and set the tax rate according to these levels of staffing? Because I think 58 cents might be too low. If we want to do roads and capital and everything else, and we can't always just go into unbalances.
I think part of that's gonna depend upon what the county, state, whoever, clarify that for me, please. The, the, give the data.
Yeah, so once we get the truth in taxation, I mean, really, really.
Where's that come from, state or county?
County, appraisal district.
So, the county gives us that, then you can put the 58, or 52, or 99, whatever you want, against those numbers and see where we actually wind up. Would be my.
Well, so, so really, just.
That, or Carrie, can you do that?
Well, I mean, the way I see this is, obviously, we have a balanced budget at 58 cents. Y'all seem to want to pull a couple things, we just gotta figure out where we want to move them to. You had asked at one point, you know, so I predicted, kind of in my interest calc, that y'all are gonna spend, that we're only gonna do $250,000 of the operating budget this year for roads. My goal was to get it up to $375,000 next year and $500,000 the year after. It's a huge ask to go from basically $100,000 to $500,000 in one year. I, my thought process was, we would take about, y'all, I always say we, but, yeah.
Were we, were we?
But y'all are the one voting on it, so.
But you're, but you're recommending.
We would spend the 250 out of the operating budget and 750,000 out of cash reserve, so we'd spend a million dollars this year in roads. And so, finding that balance after the audits and stuff like that. And so finding that balance after the audits and stuff like that, it's up to y'all. I mean, you know, that extra little bit of a cent of levied tax, if we go up to fifty-nine cent, you know, it would help, but.
Do you know a dollar in your head?
Fifty-three thousand.
So one cent of levied tax.
So that would give us a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred and six thousand dollars, roughly.
Well, if we're gonna do it.
And I would preface this this way. My guess is, I think Belton was lowering the rate, Temple was keeping steady. Um, and so obviously, if we check the telegram and stuff like that, we can, we can give you more information that knowing, depending on whatever y'all decide to spend on roads, you know, we can always, we have fund balance, you know, cash.
Oh, I just hate to dip into that, because we're gonna be needing to dip into that for every year from now till.
But that's why I really.
Which will never happen.
That's why I really put this new sheet in here, because really, you, uh, the twenty-year property history, so I added some, some information to it. But so really, you can see how debt-heavy, which is not a bad thing, what we, what the city used to use. And so, you know, probably the prime time was around twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-eight percent. And we're looking at a twelve-and-a-half percent ratio right now, knowing that when, two years, when that debt falls off, it's gonna go even lower. So we have to start planning to utilize debt for the best interests of the city.
Right.
So, so to your point, yeah, we can up it up a little bit now, but my guess is we're gonna probably be the only taxing entity that would actually go up.
Okay, well, that's a good, it's good to know.
But to your overall.
Now the year to do it.
Right. To your overall point, you're.
Because every, because the rates are going down because of BIS.
However, right, yeah, so the overall tax burden on a resident might still go down even if we went up.
Right.
But, so that's gonna be the thing of, it would fall on y'all to realize that, hey, we went up, but hopefully the overall tax relief given by the state will help every resident's burden.
And roads cost money.
Yes, and just on page seven, it said one cent of levied taxes. It is approximately, approximately fifty-three thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of depends on what the valuation comes in, on the, on the real estate.
Yeah, and so we can email you once we actually have the final numbers.
If you look at, at just chit-chat, I mean, houses have gone up quite a bit.
Yes.
And a lot of, a lot of people, when they get the tax bill, they just see that this is how much I'm gonna have to pay. And they don't necessarily take the time to understand.
Right.
That, that what we, the community, sets as the tax rate, it looks like they're paying more because we screwed around, but the value of their house went up.
Right.
And that is a, I think there's a disconnect there in most people's mind that don't pay a lot of attention to it, me included. You know, it's like, what the hell is this?
Why are my taxes going?
And it's, you know, then you have to sit down and say, okay, the house has gone up.
Right.
That's a good thing if you're selling.
And, and it's a good thing that we have no control over that.
Let's move on to organizational chart.
Well, do we want to keep it at fifty-eight cents?
I do, so I do.
The whole budget?
Anybody else want to change it?
So what, what we can do, and this is, this is easy, once we get the truth in taxation, we can provide a couple scenarios as far as what that would look like. And then we basically could say, by doing, we're just gonna say, going to the de minimis rate, which is likely what would happen. Um, going to the de minimis rate would bring in X amount of revenue into M and O, and staying at fifty-eight cents, this is, you know, this is where we're at. So we, once we get all that, that's an easy email that we, or a text message even, that we can send y'all.
And the de minimis rate, sixty cents?
We don't, we don't know yet. Once we.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We don't, we don't, we're assuming it's sixty cents, but we'll know more hopefully tomorrow.
Okay, I just kind of want to leave that door open, because I think we have an opportunity and.
And we aren't voting on it.
We're not voting on it, but if we have to jump through hoops.
We can, we can provide some scenarios on that. I mean, my, my recommendation would be, and I, I agree, that this would be the year to do it. Um, either that or waiting until the, you know, potentially 2025 or whenever you go issue debt. However, again, you know, kind of going back to the fear of the state, you know, right, you know, and instilling fear in everybody, we don't know if they're gonna take the de minimis rate away. And if that happens, then we're basically gonna be almost guaranteed to be lowering the tax rate until we can take debt out. Um, so I, I do actually agree with Councilmember Allen on this one. I think this is the year to actually raise it. Uh, what we can do and what we did whenever council had raised it to the sixty-one ninety-two, we would provide basically a fancy little, you know, well, we did it not fancy at all, but we can, we have the capability of doing it fancy now, where we can actually say, look, this is what your monthly out-of-pocket is gonna be, and this equates to a Starbucks cup of coffee or a Happy Meal or something that people can relate to. And, and I think that will be.
And the other reason I wanted 500,000 out of operations for roads is I think it will help justify the tax rate increase. And we're putting our money where our mouth is. It's actually in our budget. Now, I don't know if we can absorb all 500, maybe we just move it up to three fifty or four fifty.
Which would be easily doable if we go up to sixty cents.
Yeah, yeah. And then it's justified too, because we are going to spend maybe a million dollars next year. Let's not kid ourselves. And, and to take it out of fund balance is a little bit, you know, funny money.
And, and that's what.
It's like taking it out of your 401K, you know, to, before you retire, you know? I mean, be careful.
And really, Mayor, I mean, at the end of the day.
Yeah, now it is.
You know, at the end of the day, this is where, and we'll dive into this in the capex a little bit more, um, that's gonna be a lot of CIP discussion, FARF discussion on how we can do that. So no, I, I agree with Councilmember Allen on this. Uh, I would strongly consider this year would be the year to potentially go up to the de minimis rate. Regardless of positions, regardless of anything, I think this would be the year to do it. That's my opinion.
Well, and we've got time next week also.
Oh, I, no, y'all have all the way up, y'all have.
Because once he gets the data, then we'll have.
Right.
Yeah, y'all, y'all have all the way up until the tax rate adoption.
Did we decide we're gonna meet on this Friday or just a budget workshop again?
That is entirely up to y'all.
We can, can we do that?
Do we do it legally? They do it legally?
Not Friday.
Oh, no, not Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
So it would have to be Monday?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
City Council?
Yes, yeah. Okay.
We can make ourselves available.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we can do, we can do, we'll set a workshop for Monday at 6:00 PM here?
Yes.
Any, any other dates that y'all want to do?
Okay, I, I like that. I think we need it.
Any, well, any other dates next week outside of the, um, council? So the, so the only ones that I'm not available, I got a, a school orientation on Wednesday night, and then Thursday I'm out. So, uh, for me, it would be.
Monday works great.
I think Monday, I'm, I'm not available after the ninth. We're leaving in the morning of the ninth. So that'd be great.
I, I'm always, I have no life, I'm available.
Hey, do y'all, do y'all want to start at four or five, and we can provide dinner on Monday?
It would need to be five.
Okay, so we, so if we could do, do five?
Yeah, on Monday.
On Monday. And then we're gonna, we'll, we'll do.
Six.
Six PM?
Six.
No, 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 we are. So the, the meeting starts at six, but we're gonna do, we'll do a two-hour workshop at basically. Well, you guys initially said four-thirty, and we figured.
You can't get here till five, can you?
On the Tuesday, I can get here at four-thirty.
Okay.
I, I have to plan this stuff a little bit further ahead than.
So initially, y'all said four-thirty. Um, do y'all want to stick with four-thirty for the workshop on, before council?
If Stephen's okay with it.
Tuesday at four-thirty.
Okay.
I, I heard.
Dalton was asking, what Dalton asked is, do we want to start at four? If you're okay with it. Yeah, if, if that works, I mean, that.
Or four-thirty?
Or a workshop.
For a workshop.
So we'll start at four and Stephen will join us. Ricky tick. Okay, if you're okay with that, I'm, okay.
And that's on the eighth. Tuesday, the eighth, at four is the workshop. Monday, the seventh is at five. Monday, the seventh is at, at five, what?
Monday, Monday is gonna be five.
Five, and then Tuesday is going to be four.
Workshop four, and then council.
Council at six, okay. Got it?
Yep, we got it.
All right.
Let's hear about this.
Can you see our brains? No. Alrighty, let's go on to the organizational chart.
Thank you. You gonna walk us through it?
Could you tell us, as you're going through it, could you tell us how it's changed from what it was?
From last year or from this year?
Well, you said this is new proposed, so what?
Well, no, so basically, we, what we did is, the original one that I created, which was basically a thrown-together mess, um, which it was kind of a, a giant cluster of, of everything that was thrown in there. So we were trying to capture not just the departments and the city as a whole, but all, every, everything.
All functions.
All functions. So what we did is, we cleaned it up from the high-level org chart, you know, from the city side, and then each department broke it down more respectfully. So the only things that changed from last year to this year on the org chart is what we're proposing for this budget is gonna be, the grant coordinator position is going to be abolished. So that, that, the last day of that would be September thirtieth. Um, there would be.
Do we have to vote on that?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to vote on that?
If, so if, if y'all approve the budget and everything, really, the budget encompasses almost anything and everything in there.
Once we approve the budget, all the details are already approved. We don't have to vote on them individually.
So technically, and, and really, what we do even for that, Councilmember Allen, is we even kind of take it a step further, and a lot of cities do this, and I actually think it's good practice anyways. Even if we put vehicles or put some high-end, you know, high-dollar stuff in there, we typically, especially if we're ready for it, October first or October council meeting, we'll have a loaded consent agenda with all the stuff that was kind of in the budget that we know would be purchased that, you know, may, may not get pushed back. Um, vehicles or, or things that have lead times, we will put those into consent agenda stuff from the budget, so it's fresh on everybody's mind. And then y'all have the quote, y'all have everything you need, consent agenda gets approved. So then it's kind of a double approval process, um, with, with, you know, quotes that we may or may not have gotten, because a lot of the times, we'll get quotes and they're only good for sixty days. So then we have to go back and there may be some changes and some.
Some more on the capital stuff. That's the.
Like large vehicle, you know, vehicles are, you know, heavy and stuff. But yeah, any positions, any, you know, holiday stuff, all of that, once y'all approve the budget, it is all encompassing.
Okay.
So the senior accountant position would be a newly created position, which is really, it's not a realignment, but it's a newly created position in the finance department.
What, what sheet are you working with?
I'm just, I'm just going.
Let's do the first sheet.
Can we do the first sheet first?
Yeah, if y'all want. So I mean, nothing, nothing from, nothing from the organizational chart has changed. So do y'all want to just go through it with what it already is, or how do y'all want to do this? Because I mean, I know y'all can read, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, but I'm confused. So I'm not sure, like citizens, I don't know why the citizens, why you don't have a line to the citizens. I mean, it seems to me the citizens have a line to council and to the city manager. I could be wrong, but.
In order, I mean, it's in order.
So every, every higher.
Citizens have to go through council to get to the city manager.
No, 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 this is, so the hierarchical thing of an org chart, which is antiquated in some sense, it basically is showing who's in charge of whom, not who is reporting. This is not a communication tool. This is a hierarchical tool. So basically, it says the citizens are the boss of everybody. Ultimately, they put vote council into office. Council appoints the city manager, and then the city manager, the city attorney, and the city judge are peers, because those are the, the positions that are appointed by council. Um, under here, we have the ACM CFO, and we don't, we don't break out the executive positions into specific departments. We keep it as kind of a team unified function. That way, it's plug-and-play. So whether I'm here or Carrie's here, it's, there's, there's, again, seamless kind of interaction among all the departments.
Okay, so, so we're on that one. So we've got the assistant, uh, city manager, CFO, and then it looks like the whole organization is communicating up through him to get to you.
No, that's why there's two lines. One city manager going down to the horizontal line.
What's Carrie responsible for?
So, so Carrie, yes.
What else? He's got all these lines going down from him.
So, so one of the, one of the big things that we've had, you know, in, in some of the, we'll call them the, some of the administrative challenges and leadership challenges, is we have both the umbrella from city manager and up, and all the regional, the politics, you know, you know, managing the entire city. And then ultimately, Carrie, from this perspective, is helping me from the lower side. So he's, he's, him and I are ultimately team up for every single department, but he has a lot greater oversight into administrative services. You know, he's in there constantly handling, you know, you know, executive level complaints or certain complaints.
So who does BJ report to?
So, so every, at the end of the day, every single director I'm responsible for. So from the delegation of authority, Carrie has some delegation of authority and decision-making power across every single director. So directors can go to either Carrie and I, and Carrie and I ultimately discuss and meet and talk, and we stay in constant communication. So if I'm gone, Carrie can fill in with, you know, seamlessly, and if, well, if he's gone, then I continue, you know, to do ultimately what we're doing. So that's where.
So Matt can go to Carrie to go ask for approval for something?
Correct. And so we, so, but.
Is it like real redundant for a city our size to have?
So, yes, I mean.
Do executives that are making decisions for the whole city?
So at the end of the day, you're absolutely right. I mean, you know, from a, from a realistic perspective, our city is smaller from an ACM side. But, you know, the reality of it is, there's no way that we would be able to accomplish the stuff that we've accomplished, at least from the time being, with having to clean up everything in the past and then also having to focus on the future. So from a leadership side, if, if Carrie wasn't here, could I still function 100%? However, I would be more time in city hall versus more time actually going out to the directors, out to the departments, getting out of the, you know, out of city hall. Um, a lot of time would be, would be at city hall, you know, handling, you know, certain accounts payable stuff or certain things that even though the finance director ideally would, in a way, this is, one, added a, a level of succession, because again, things can always be volatile, that's just the reality of certain things. And from the decision-making side, he now does have some decision-making authority within reason, within boundaries. So he has delegation of authority to make certain decisions.
So how do we get Carrie to 100% focused on getting the audits done and getting us back on track? Because we've been catching up for two and a half years, and at some point, we gotta get caught up. And I, I'm afraid he's being fragmented.
So you, from, from the organizational chart piece and from really what we're looking at from the city, that's, yes, that's how it appears. But it, it's not in, in practice, because everything that he is touching and everything that he's doing is at city hall. So we have a constant executive at city hall that is, that is dedicated to the finance, to the audits, to.
Day-to-day administration.
And exactly.
Right.
And so for me, this is allowing me to, to the point of a lot of emails that we've really had, is making sure we have those relationships with the C, you know, the SitCog, KTEMPO, you know, getting out there to figure out grants, because that relationship, those relationships, despite what we've heard, did not exist before.
You gotta be in the room.
And I gotta be in the room. And so, I, you know, I didn't, you know, even though we've had a great relationship with the cog and with KTEMPO, because I was so tied up in some of the administrative things initially, Carrie has been able to help offset some of that. So then I can focus on council, getting that regional presence.
And in a, in a status quo organization, it's awesome. If you were to look at this in a vacuum.
Yes.
But our finance function is broken.
No, 100%.
Totally broken.
Which is, which is.
We're gonna talk about it in a minute, but.
Which is, which is exactly why, in my opinion, that having the ACM and CFO at this time currently is actually beneficial for the broken state that we're in, because even though the finances are broken, we can't look at it in a vacuum.
Right.
Of just finances. Our infrastructure's broken, our, our drainage, our master plans.
Carrie's gonna be involved in any project we do in this city.
Correct, and so, so when we look at it, yes, the financial system's broken, but there's a lot of other things. There's, there's a lot.
He's heard all this.
Yes, Mama Dad.
There is a lot of other things that are broken too, that, that he helps, you know, offset the financial broken piece, where I can then focus on the other broken pieces.
Okay.
And we can dedicate.
As long as your focus is finance.
Once we get through this budget, this week, it's right back in them.
And I just, I see a dotted line under city council to the city secretary. From what I've been reading online, and I don't know if this is how we do it or not, but it's typically like if you bring in a new city secretary, that person would answer to council as well as to the city manager, not as in we're doing a job description for him. They're part of our, we, we should have some access to him if we.
Oh, absolutely, that's, that's why that dotted, that's why the dotted line is there, so.
So we should be a part of the hiring, uh, the new city secretary position?
So, so this is, so this is, this kind of, this kind of goes back to, again, the city manager piece. So city managers ultimately were responsible for those positions. This is, this is where your city manager ideally is gonna keep y'all in the loop. So whenever we let the police chief go, city council as a whole completely understood and knew what was happening as it was going on. So same thing with any of the process, yeah, same thing with any of the process, you know, a city manager's going to keep, you know, keep folks, you know, keep council apprised of what's going on.
Okay.
Um, across the board.
Okay, so my concern, and it's in the organizational chart, and you brought it up, but it's also in the salaries, and Camille, please don't take offense to any of this. We're talking about the position, we're not talking about you as a person, okay? But when you look at the city job, city secretary job description, a lot of this stuff is not being done by our city secretary right now. And for whatever reason, you know, the agendas, the packets, the ordinances, the resolutions. I mean, this, a city secretary across other cities perform like paralegal functions. And which is why they get the, you know, the big bucks, which is why they're classified with the same level as our fire chief and our police chief. But in our city, it's not functioning that way. So we need to decide, I think, if the city secretary reports to us, and I think it's part of the budget discussion, it's part of the salary discussion.
Yeah, so I'll, I mean, I'll be very frank. If you have a position that's not a director-level position with a director-level pay, good luck finding somebody. Because dealing with politics.
Well, what's their job? You have to look at what we're asking them to do.
Well, no, no, no. So, so I, I, again, I get it 100%. The question is, is this the job description what y'all want or is it not? I'm just showing, I'm just talking about the realistic side of the organization.
I'm talking about the compensation study, when they go out and they give, they give rates about a city secretary. They're looking at people that do all these functions. And the way we are operating is our city secretary is not doing all these functions.
Like which functions?
Well, preparing ordinances, oh, I thought you had.
I mean, I'm sure I do, but I've slept since then. Well, and so, and so.
Honestly, you know, like on the Parks and Rec Committee, having somebody work with me on coming up with an application and having somebody work with me on coming up with the ordinance, I did it all on my own. Because I couldn't get any support from city staff.
Well, hold on, hold on, let me, let me, let me clarify that real quick, though, because the, when we talked about the application, I had gotten with Neil, who's our city attorney, and he said that y'all had to approve the ordinance, you know, the final ordinance for the Parks and Rec stuff. You know, with, with budget being a priority because of everything going on, I literally got asked today about the application. You asked me a week ago also, but we were also in the process of trying to prepare for a budget.
I had no problem doing it myself.
And, but, but, but that's not fair to staff, because from a standpoint, we, we really, we were going to do that, but we were focusing on the budget piece.
We'll talk about city secretary.
So maybe we'll.
Get to that point.
Okay, fine.
So next page of the organize, I'm happy with the first page, is everybody okay with it? After it was explained to us, as long as we are under the understanding that Kerry is getting adequate time to do what he needs to for our finances.
Well, can I add that too? And I think it's going to be next week's agenda, but I mean, the same way, it's obviously in the executive summary, but, you know, it's going to be our recommendation to get y'all's blessing to hire the senior accountant position now. So it's going to be in the upcoming budget, but obviously, that process takes a while. So to ease the transition, so it'll be in next week's agenda. No, no, but just, just to give you a heads up, that yes, I mean.
I'm ready to talk about it.
If we're finished with, are you happy with the rest of the organizational chart? It just basically breaks down to each department and what they show, and I do see that.
Anything in red is basically going away, anything in light blue is, is ultimately being rejected.
Ultimately, in the budget.
And so under finance, the senior accountant would be under Kerry on page two.
Right, right.
So, okay.
And the grant coordinator would be gone.
Yeah, because it's, it's in red, that's actually brown.
And the executive assistant would be gone. Yes. Under, okay.
Okay, all right, then let's go, let's go on, and I was thinking, I had a list of things that we talked about last night that I would like us to discuss and address. I'm just going to read them to you. And see, first, we should discuss and vote on whether we want to do the insurance for dependents for one year. We should vote if we want a fire specialist. We need to vote for the office manager and public safety. We need to vote for a senior accountant, yes or no? We need to vote, well, we didn't talk about brush bins, I had that down, we'll do it later. Okay, and then, okay, so fire specialist, office manager and public safety, senior accountant, and brush bins, we didn't talk about it last night, but I was going to mention something on it. I'm just going to mention something on it. And then the marina, I didn't know, I was going to talk about those docks, but it looks like that might come up on a CIP, so. And then, and then I would like to see us discuss the salaries. Salaries, yeah, that'd be the, that would be, if we could accomplish that tonight, I think it would be a good start. So can I open up discussion on? Okay, can I, yes.
Does that work for you guys?
I'm, so, and Roxanne and I kind of chatted before. Really, I'm kind of shifting focus, and she kind of agreed on this. This is y'all training, I mean, I don't want to just regurgitate stuff that some, you know, we've really already kind of talked about. So what I want to do is ultimately let y'all talk tonight, and then I'll be here for kind of questions, guidance, you know, clarifications or whatever.
We don't have any tape, do we? Oh, it's sticky.
So starting.
Yeah, they're posted. Oh, all right, there you go.
Sweet. Oh, cool. Yeah, there you go.
Just before we run off on that.
Okay, well, I like visual.
Back on the organizational chart, on, on the second page of admin, the executive assistant disappears.
It's underneath finance, under Kerry.
The executive assistant disappears.
You see, the executive assistant is going away, yes.
So that, that was the dual hat you were talking about with him?
No.
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 So who is the executive assistant?
Camille.
Camille is right now.
Ah, okay.
Okay, and, and yes, that position will go away. City secretary will be there, and then that senior account position that we have to vote on is under finance.
Okay, so the executive assistant function is going to be absorbed by whom?
Basically, the city secretary ultimately, so it'll be.
It's kind of merging to.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's kind of, because we, you know, we knew that things were going to evolve over time, and so that was kind of, you know, you know, future planning and preparation of, in anticipation of really trying to grow with, you know, grow the organization from within and train from within.
Does the city secretary functions have enough slack in it to take up the?
Okay, historically, my understanding is our, and I was involved in the city, I don't know, six years ago or whatever, but the city secretary is a part-time job for Morgan's Point. It is not a full-time job. Even if they did all the activities on this list, you know, it's not a full-time job. So Althea, when Althea was there, she actually did all the payroll. So she did city secretary, plus she did an accounting function or a human resources function.
Which in this case, you know, Camille has already been doing payroll, that was one realignment we had. So she would ultimately pick up part-time municipal court, payroll, executive assistant and city secretary.
And so maybe we need a new job description on that of what?
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, if we're going to authorize, you know, the, the salary at that level.
Yeah, so we can, we can update.
Yeah, I know, but I was just talking about.
Yeah, we can update, we can update the job description, but really, just to kind of keep it simple, it is a director-level spot.
Yeah, okay, all right. So we're, we're starting with insurance for dependents. And that was going to be 29 to 33,000, depending on what number was thrown out. I'd like to hear some discussion on that and see what you guys think.
I think it's cheap. And it's in the budget too already, so the budget is built with that in there. In talking to some of the directors, depending on what the options are, because it's a, it's a lot of money for them to have out of their paycheck that sometimes that they don't even utilize. So I'm thinking that is the max number that we might even have if there was nine employees. As we get even a better insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield, that number might go down to six. So 29,000 and whatever I put in there is the max. So it might be, 20,000 might be a more realistic number that we will actually realize.
And that's just passing on 12% of 20, I mean, a 46% increase, right?
It would, it would seem like in our earlier discussion, I mean, money is money, I got that, but 33K is not a lot of money to help our employees at a time that, that, you know, if you're not going to have a cola, and, you know, we don't want them running.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so if we could get the.
Well, yeah, but is there, is there an alternative to that?
Okay, if we could get the compensation list by employee and add just 20, 22, the base salary there, then we can see, here's what happened when we did the comp study. When we did the comp study, we increased payroll $250,000. That went to all these employees just last year. Now, we're changing healthcare plans, and that's going to cost the city another $116,000. And plus, we're doing a two-step in the budget, a two-step increase for all the employees, which reigns from, you know, depending upon what it is, but one of the maximums was 1,700, was kind of the average of.
Right, but that's why I put the percent in there from where they are to midpoint. So you can actually look that even, even though we added $200,000 of salaries last year and we're going up two steps, so many people aren't even at 95%. So I know, and it is a lot.
But it's how much can the city afford in any one year?
100%, right.
So something to consider outside of, outside of really data and analytics and, and pay and salary and everything else. So there's, there's a difference between, and I hate using this term, but the little guy. You used the little guy before, so I'm going to use the little guy. There's a difference between the little guy and directors. And so when you, when we look at these positions, especially in local government, the little guys and gals typically are not going to be able to pick up and move a family to go take a job in Georgetown or Round Rock or drive an hour or anything. So when you look at the salary comparisons of fair market value to a utility billing clerk or an administrative assistant or a water, a water operator, right? Those are all going to be, even in the city of Temple as large as they are, those are all going to be pretty much fair market value, because those are the people that you're going to lose to the local communities based off of the 25 cent raise. Because again, they're not going to necessarily pick up their families and just up and move. The reason why the fair market value on the little guy is important, because on a director level, a director-level person can move, and they're going to get a 30, 40, 50% pay increase.
Right.
That's why we have lower compression on that on the salary.
So let me, I, Dorothy, I kind of am getting your opinion on it. Jimbo, do you, would you like to say something about this?
Need to turn my microphone on, is what I need to do. Yeah, so, you know, to me, I think it's a no-brainer. We've got to take care of our people, especially, like Dalton said, our, what did you call them? Whatever you just called them.
Guys.
Yeah, the little guys.
A structure.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, you know, just kind of looking, you know, when you look across the board, of course, you know, all my kids are grown and gone, but I can only imagine what's going on with our families right now with inflation and, and everything else. So I think we owe it to them to do whatever we can to take care of them. You know, I got it, this is, you know, when we throw money around, money's money and it comes out of our citizens' pockets. So it's important to consider that, but just like Kerry said, it's already in the budget. We're at about 98.5% budgeted. And just food for thought, my sense, and I know we're going to cover it, my sense last night was moving down a little bit that the administrative position is in jeopardy. So my thought was, okay, if we're going to pull that position, we just put money back in the budget. So, and I know it's moving money around, but I, I just think it's a no-brainer, we need to take care of our people.
So am I hearing you correctly that maybe we hold? No, I just want to clarify what Jimbo said.
Okay.
Are we, you're saying we hold on the office manager position so we can fund the dependent care?
I'm saying it's an option.
I'm open, yeah, that, yeah.
So I'd like to hear Stephen.
So, you know, I'm going to always go for the little guy, because I believe, I believe in that, and you know what? I don't take that derogatory. I think our, our workers that are in the trenches, they're the soldiers, and they're what make our city so great. You look at $33,000, right, there's 36 employees, what is that, $1,000 a person? Now, my concern with this, and I want to voice this, because no other business that I have ever heard of does dependent care.
Or 100% employee care.
100% employee care is pretty common, in, in.
Local government is pretty common, and even in dependent care in local government, it is not uncommon. It's just at what level?
Right, well, okay, yeah, superintendents and, and probably some of the higher-ups, absolutely. But like, I'll, I'll use teaching as an example, like, you know, my dependent insurance, we can't even afford it. We don't even do it. Like, I'm like, my wife works at Scott and White essentially for insurance for our kids, because the reality is it's just so expensive. So I have sympathy for our guys and gals, and I, I want them to be taken care of, period, because they take care of our citizens, and that's what we're here for.
Okay, and Pat?
Yeah, I, I think it's very important, and I agree with you, that, you know, this thing can grow up to be a monster. But teaching, working in, in any kind of governmental job, everybody understands going in that you have some security that you don't necessarily have in the non-governmental businesses. But the, the Bennys are what make up for the crap salary. And that's important, because that's what keeps people there. Sorry?
And working in this wonderful environment.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you know, there's, there's a lot of jobs that we've done over the time that were not glamorous or whatever, and the pay was probably not what, you know, everybody thinks that they can make a million dollars if they walk out of the governmental job, and that's not necessarily true. But it's always the Bennys, that's what makes governmental jobs worth the flip.
So.
I think 33K is more cheap.
And then, then.
My statement, and then we can call for a vote.
Okay.
Or will that go for additional comments? I'm trying to let everybody voice first and then we'll.
Oh, so you want to say, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I, I was thinking about, we already really bit the bullet when we went to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and it was a significant increase, and we did that for our employees, because they didn't like the insurance they had. And I thought it was really, really a good choice. My biggest concern is that this is going to get buried, and it will become an expectancy. And next year, if the price raises, then we're, then we've put ourselves in the insurance business. So because of that, I would, I would vote no, so.
Okay, and I, can I mitigate that? I think if Dalton, and I actually had the exact same thought process, is how do we really clarify that this is a transition year, and we're only doing it this year? If Dalton could write a note to the employees to explain what we are doing and say in writing, this is one year only, and next year, even if Blue Cross Blue Shield goes up to 20%, next year, you are going to fund the entire, I would like to see it in writing, and I would like to see it go out to all the employees. So we're perfectly clarifying that we don't, that we're not just going to, by default, you know, do this every year.
I totally agree with that, actually.
Yeah, so I think that might mitigate it.
Any other discussion? Want to make a motion on that?
Uh, sure. Well, we don't have to vote on that, because if we just vote for the whole budget.
I mean, if, if every.
We can take a quick straw poll.
If y'all, if y'all are kind of all in agreeance on things, that's ultimately what we do, and then once you vote on the whole budget, so.
Yeah, so we'd like to go forward.
It looks like it's, it's passing.
Yeah, so to answer your question is absolutely. So one of the things that we actually really never had before during open enrollment was actually open enrollment. Everybody kind of just got what they got, when I came on board, it was like that. So we actually have packets, everything, we sit down for two mandatory meetings to go over every single thing that they're doing, and we can put that into the.
That third party comes and actually does that with them.
Absolutely.
So you could add that letter saying that the city, because of the large increase.
And we've, and we've already pretty much have spoken with every single employee.
Yeah, but I mean, in writing.
Yeah, we could put it in writing, but yes.
So there's no question.
Okay, so next on the agenda then would be to look at the fire specialist position that Taryn talked about.
I can start, he had me at hello.
Start that one.
Yes.
Because, you know, I was pretty adamantly against that, really any new positions, and I still am struggling with those. However, last night, as I was going to bed, man, it was like, I felt so convicted, because I thought, man, there's only two guys that spend a night there. And I thought, that is insane for a city our size.
And what our residents expect.
And what our, yeah, and, and then, to the point, all day, I wanted to talk to Taryn. So finally, I got a break on my way home, and I called Taryn and I said, hey, man, I just want to let you know I'm on your side. What you said was brilliant, because it was brilliant, and, you know, it's a justifiable posi, justifiable position. I don't know where we get, how we get the money, he had some creative ideas after talking to him. I was very encouraged, and, you know, so I am in public forum saying that what I said last night was wrong, okay? And I think we probably need to move forward with the fire specialists.
Okay.
I think it would be important to our fire, fire department.
Do you have, I'm just going to go around the room, see.
I agree with the point that it would get somebody for 24 coverage and put his, his schedule into something other than chaos. And I, I think as expectations in the community are that we're going to, if you have a fire, somebody's going to be there to put it out. I think that what we can do within reason to make that happen is a plus.
I agree with the position, okay.
Jimbo, let me guess.
I have some reservations. No, no, I appreciate, you know, all your thoughts, and like I said yesterday, I was trying to distance myself from that one a little bit, obviously, because I'm invested in the fire department. And, and one thing it will also give us, and this is just food for thought for our citizens when we discuss it with them, is, and I think Dalton can attest to this with his experience in, in public safety, especially with the fire department. in, in public safety, especially with the fire department, we lose a lot of folks and that, like Chief said yesterday, that move on to bigger departments. And, and quite honestly, a lot of it is money, bigger departments pay more. Some guys just want more fires, which is kinda demented, but that's what we do. And I think this step will also help to solidify the department primarily because of the schedule, because now it's not, you guys are gonna be a little bit more, more stable and that leads to morale increase and, and so Roxanne and I talked, and yeah, the fire department, the police department, really all of our employees are the gem of the city, so I'm, I'm absolutely all for it, I think it's, it's beneficial. And Carrie, if I'm not mistaken, Dalton, Carrie, this position doesn't start funding until 1 January, is that correct?
Yeah, and that would've been some of the thoughts, depending on where we end up, like if, if y'all want to vote, we wanna keep it at 1-1, or if y'all wanna move it up as a 10-1, and I can change the money around, but.
And so some of the thought process on going to the 1-1, outside of the senior accountant, that was the one we were talking about doing, but as far as the other positions, we had recommended 1-1, and that was kind of like that, that compromise, that give and take. So you guys, look, we know the audits are important, we don't wanna just overkill it that way, we have the ability if we had to, for whatever reason, again, we don't think that's the case, but that was kind of our thing to counsel of saying, hey, this is our compromise.
Okay.
And last thing, Roxanne, is it, I think that's, I think that'll work, just talking, you know, in and around the department, I think that's perfect. Gives us a little bit of fudgering on budget and it allows Chief to start getting into that investigative process on, on, because we have several folks that are, are kind of in line, potentially ready to move into a full-time position, a paid position, so that'll, that will allow us down at the department to start sifting through the candidates, so to speak, and start canvassing.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
The other thing I wanna talk about and, and about the public safety side, as a former paramedic, and I should've mentioned this yesterday, so I apologize for not, because I think the more important part than just fires, and the reason why I supported this position actually, cause again, I push back on every single position that we put in, and I actually, I push back on this position as well because, you know, but again, everything that we've talked about and all the concerns. I'm good with this position because the way Taren, you know, Chief Askey is philosophically on it, we do a lot of medical calls and he is very driven into the medical component of things, and so this is actually more of a direct impact. Screw the fires, the fires are 1 percent of, of calls, that's, that's a moot point. But the medical component that he is bringing and the expectations that he's bringing from intermediates and paramedics, that is something that a lot of cities do not get, and that is a service, I think, to our residents in the medical world that we actually can probably capitalize on, that we're, we're looking at some options in the future for.
That's what I was gonna say too, that's another reason why the position is so valuable, because they've, they get there fast. I mean, and, and we know that some medical issues aren't immediate, the faster the better. And I, and I think it, it makes us be a little bit of a, in, in the bigger community, not like Morgan's point, but the bigger area that we're in, look at the services that we can help provide for our native communities, and to me, it just, it seemed like a really good, good choice. So I think that, well, it's pretty unanimous, or at least.
Yeah, and, and then.
So you want it 10-1 or 1-1, or what's the timing? I mean, I'm open.
I like 1-1, I think that's.
Gives you time to.
I think it's built into the budget.
Yep.
And they, is it gonna be any impact if waiting?
10-1 would be, Dalton, put it in the budget now.
No, no, put it in the budget with the expected filled position starting 1-1.
Okay.
And then the other thing I will say, you know, obviously the job description piece of things, you know, this is one of, one of my expectations from the city manager side in, in the process. Eventually they gotta get their intermediate, that is a driving factor. We don't, even though EMT basics are, are a great resource, we want those who are on the squad to either be intermediates or paramedics or higher. So there is, he's doing, working through the process of what that looks like, but anybody who shows up at the house will, will have an intermediate or higher at a minimum.
Somebody that can take some type of action.
Correct, if, if, if some action is required.
Right, no, yes, of course, yeah.
So is there, is there any impact on the department as a whole if we wait until 1-1 instead of doing it now?
I don't, I don't think so, Pat, I think it's, you know, it would be, the department, I believe would continue as we currently, as the department, sorry, as the department is currently structured and outfitted, the only difference would be the planning process would start moving forward for that 1-1 timeline, but.
And it might take a minute to find somebody.
And until you.
You might wanna go ahead and post it and.
Yeah.
So, 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 sorry, real quick, so I'm, and this is actually some good edification side on, on budgets, you know, for y'all, from our standpoint. Once the budget gets adopted, we obviously will not hire people on a payroll, but once the budget gets adopted, we will start putting out, you know, job descriptions and stuff for those positions. So that way, you know, by those certain dates of time, we can get them on board. So, yes.
All right.
Well, I was gonna just, after talking to Taren, he was talking about how there, there are guys in the station and firehouse, and that's how it is actually progressively, traditionally, you know, I'm not a huge tradition guy, but like, traditionally, that's, they've hired work from over then, and I think our guy, those guys know our city and it's awesome.
Our police do that too really well, I think.
I think Taren will.
But hey, you did, you did say the thing you never say in public safety, something to expect in between now and January, now something is gonna happen between.
Thanks a lot.
You have that meteorite coming, so.
Yeah, yeah, so now something will happen.
All right. Let's go on to the next, let's go on to the next position, and that was for public safety and the office manager, a new position that would be over at the fire department, police department. Thoughts on that?
We're gonna ask you because you've got, I think, a, a, or, I don't have any idea. I mean, I hear what they say, but.
Yeah, I, you know, I can tell you that being down there, moving, moving about and about, what Shu Chi said yesterday is, is fairly accurate, it wasn't fairly, it, it's accurate. When I go down there, you know, just as I'm passing through, or whether I'm kinda, I don't pull shifts, but you know, whether they're, I'm, I'm ready to respond to something. You generally see at least one, if not two of those guys behind a desk hacking away on a computer.
Okay.
So, you know, that piece, I, I absolutely see all the time. They do spend a lot of time doing administrative stuff. All of the other things that he talked about, you know, obviously as not, not being a police officer, I can't really talk to as far as record keeping, I mean, it makes sense to me.
I guess the only thing that, that was a concern to me was when he started talking about some of the police specific, some of the stuff that they have, that he's, is taking up his time, his police officer certification specific, that, did I misunderstand that, Dalton? That some of that stuff cannot be just Joe Smo come in and, and do it, it has to be a certified law enforcement person?
And some of that, I would think, is a function of being a policeman. I mean, I only have seen them in the movies, but you know, they're always sitting there bitching about their paperwork and they're gonna fill this file and they have to do that report, and, I mean, it is, it's the nature of the beast, and I don't think you can delegate that to someone that doesn't, that didn't go on the scene to do the investigation.
Well, yeah, I, I don't think to that, I, the impression I got was some of those files and stuff, if you're not a cop, you don't get access to it.
Yeah, when, when I spoke with Shu Chi about that, you know, trying to just get direction and, and where he wanted to go with this, that was one of the things he did bring up. And just for clarity's sake, he kind of explained it to me, like our, our records keeping area, you know, is really considered a secure access kind of location, and you, you can't just, I guess, Dalton may know more about this, but you can't just bring somebody off the streets, I mean, you've gotta kinda do like a background check, I would assume, and make sure, you know, so, you know, there is a little bit more to it, I think, than just, than bringing somebody in.
I think that one of the things is if in fact, half of the job is gonna be for the cops, who knows? I mean, the impression I got was probably gonna be a 70-30 split, just on workload.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the, the fire department has less of that kind of huge administrative burden.
They still, they still do, just, it's, it's just different, and that's kind of the initial, the intent behind it was to, you know, obviously not just, you know, say, hey, you get an admin assistant, you get an admin assistant, and you get an admin assistant.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But.
But the, I guess my, where I would try to head with that is if you have to, if you wanna take the burden off of the chief and the, the number two, and, and put that in an admin position, is that gonna have to be, I guess my concern is if you hire somebody to come in and be an admin assistant, but because of the laws, you can't let those non-cop guys access to that information or the databases or whatever, then that's gonna be a kind of a big old crunch.
So, so that's, so, and, and to the, kind of the point of the office manager position and why it's really heavily scrutinized, is a lot of those folks actually have those certifications that they can dive into CGIS, they can dive into the database. Like, for example, even as a city manager, if we had a dispatch department, I would actually have to go get my certification to be able to go into dispatch, to be able to look at certain things in there as a city manager. And so you can have non-sworn officers or non-sworn staff have access to the stuff because they go through the credentialing process and they go through the background and everything.
So, this brings up what I've been thinking about after this, because again, I'm having a hard time with our budget, spending more money on things when we don't necessarily know how much we really have. But if I was gonna hire another person, why not hire another police officer and part of their duty is, okay, you're gonna be on the patrol half the day, and half the day you're going to be an office person doing paperwork. And, yeah, man, that, that stinks, but some new recruit, some 25-year-old kid, 22-year-old kid who just got out of academy, might be fired up about that, you know? And, and again, I'm just throwing things out because I'm thinking.
I, I like that optional.
And, and I, and, and in that same light, I was thinking, he mentioned last night that he kinda lost an executive position when Klein left, and so why couldn't he take one of his police officers and the one that he feels could do the job and designate it for this position?
Um, I mean, we can, we can.
Hire a new patrolman to take that spot.
Or, or not, you know.
It looks like we, our city could support 10 policemen, if, two per thousand.
So, yeah, and really, what I, what I would almost say.
Was that data?
My understanding, oh, go ahead and say it.
It's about two, it's about two officers per thousand is kind of the T cole or, you know, standard, and we're about 1.94, give or take, you know, on, on stats, but, so, yeah, so, so, so really, really, I think, outside of kinda diving into the operational, you know, what-ifs and all the different options that we could do, I think the best option would be is pull it out of the budget, you know, for this year, and I think, you know, don't say no, but we'll pull it out of the budget because it's, it's a no, but then when we go and talk staffing, we have some better opportunity where we can actually focus on staffing needs for the long-term, instead of trying to juggle the budget and all this other stuff. I think the easy button is, let's pull it out of the budget, and then when we hit November and talk about staffing, it's, we can.
I, I think the one thing though is, is I want to make sure, and, and I believe the councils all in the same place, that Matt knows that like, we do hear what he's saying, you know what I mean? Like, I mean, we support him.
Yeah, absolutely, and that, and that's why, that's why I think it's important, you know, when we, when we start looking at, you know, the, the November kinda council retreat to do all of that, that really gives us some opportunities to focus on some very specific things, not having to try to juggle this massive brain fry of information with everything going on. You know, ideally by November, you know, we, we're gonna have a, y'all are gonna have a better understanding of, of everything, so I, I think the best easy move, simple, pull it from the budget, we'll show on the, on the budget coming up, we'll pull all that stuff out, and then we can re-engage and rediscuss at a staffing time to figure out not just staffing for PD, but for the entire city.
Because we'll have the better numbers, we'll be in a better position to know.
To decide, yes.
Hopefully the audits will be done and we'll have a good, we'll all just sleep better at night.
And don't forget, I, I won the lottery, you said, but I didn't buy a ticket, so you're gonna cover that for me.
Just so y'all know, that's about 44,000 from the budget, so it, as we, as a talking point. I had it, I had it as 1-1, so that's what, if you read it, and I put, yeah, so it wasn't a fully loaded, full 12 months of salary.
Okay, so is everybody in agreement, we're just gonna pull that position from the budget at this time?
And again, y'all could always add it again if you want, even before, or again, discuss the staffing.
Yes.
Yeah, that, the only thing I'd like to add, Roxanne, is, and Stephen, you hit on it, you mentioned it last night, and again, just, I gotta understand, you know, I, you guys know I'm near and dear to the safety center, so I see validity in it, but just, I would like to make sure that we revisit that definitely during the retreat, and then, you know, six months down the road, just, I think we owe it to, like you said, we owe it to Shu Chi to, to take a look at that again and see where we're at.
We just could encourage him to think about using some of his current staff and be, if he could pull them for, you know, 10 hours a week or whatever, that could help.
Get someone else to help him.
I don't know.
And, and. And I had a conversation with him about redaction and PIA and stuff after, after the meeting. And you know, like, I remember when I went to that training, they were talking about how the city secretary does some of the redaction on the PIA, and then city attorney is, picks up some of that stuff, and so I'm just wondering if there's maybe a way for us to use some of those resources, you know, I don't know, Dalton, I'm all into this, but like.
Absolutely, I mean, from, from the city secretary's side, I mean, there, there's some expectations and stuff that are 100 percent coming, you know, and, and that, that we gotta look at, and so from the redaction side, yes, there's across the board stuff that needs to be done, you know, if, if, yes, so.
I think that, I think that's a smart move, and I just wanna make sure that the chief understands, we're not saying no, we're saying, we wanna make a smart decision.
But you know, and you look at options, you know, like Roxanne said, promoting from within, taking 50 percent of his paperwork and, you know, having a couple lieutenants do it, I'm sorry?
Right.
Delegating it.
Delegate it, yeah.
And that's, and that's where, and that's where I'd say, you know, from diving into the weeds.
That discussion is over, let's go on to the next.
All, all I'll say is, let me do my, let me do my job and we will figure that out.
Roxanne, I, if I can, and, and, so I just got a text from Matt that he asked me to share with you guys, and he said his biggest concern, apparently he's, he's monitoring or watching.
Big brother's always watching.
Hi, Matt.
So, the couple things he wanted me to mention is that, you know, again, reiterate that the, with the budget, the position is not slated to be filled until 1-1, and, I'm reading here as we go, so his concern is that by moving an officer into that position, if we don't obviously fund an additional officer, then we are pulling somebody off the streets.
No, I hear that loud and clear.
Okay.
All right, and I guess I would feel more comfortable funding a police position than I would an admin position, just theoretically.
What would he prefer? What would you prefer, Matt?
He, that's why it's in the budget, and this is where I kinda, yes, I mean, so this isn't a new position that they created out of thin air, it's a new position for the city of Moreland Park Resort. So other cities use this type of an admin to facilitate their officers, so when y'all are diving into the weeds, per se, this is y'all thinking that this is how the police department should work, so, which is, you can do that, but this is something that he wouldn't have asked for unless he thought he needed. He didn't ask for a patrol person, he asked for an office manager.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, and his, his comment on that one, obviously he's monitoring, is that an officer's gonna cost more overall, and then.
But it's gonna have more benefit to the city.
It'll have more capacity.
Right.
Put him on speaker.
Okay. See, this is why we need a devoted for the, the mobile thing.
Yes. So, sorry I couldn't be there, I'm actually taking care of my daughter right now, but I did want to make sure that y'all fully understand that the position, just like the fire department position, was not slated to 1-1 to build in the buffer for the audits. So I think, you know, on a, on a city side of thing, if it's okay to slate one for 1-1, it should be okay to slate another for 1-1, right? But, I mean, that's not my decision. The other thing is that I wanna make sure that y'all understand that if you, you think, you believe it's that you wanna hire a police officer, I can tell you right now it's gonna cost you more money, because I can't hire an officer what I can't a civilian for. So if you wanna hire an officer, it's gonna cost you more money. And then we're, they're gonna end up with doing the same duties, which in fact, will And then they're going to end up with doing the same duties, which in fact will sacrifice the streets. If I hire an officer or the city says we should hire an officer, they, they generally expect that person to be on the streets. The admin person, if I could do it with a part-time person would be great, but I can't because it's a full-time responsibility. So doing one, like pulling an officer off the street, again, to do some of that half the time, you just lost an officer off the street for that time. So I don't think that is a great idea to purport to our citizens that, hey, we can pull this officer off the street for half the time because now the streets are not as safe as they were.
I wouldn't suggest that, that's not what I'm thinking.
Well, and the other side too, the other side too is their shifts, the way they do is they rotate every six months. They rotate, they rotate every six, or, you know, six months, maybe six months, but they go from nights to days frequently. And so as they rotate those swing shifts, then those responsibilities either would have to shift to you. So it's just, operationally is really just not ideal because they're not on 24 hours.
But again, from the, from the standpoint of, you know, if we're talking about money, I fully support, I'll take an officer. If you want to give me one, if you want to commit to that now, I'll take an officer, but I can tell you right now it's going to cost you more money. And so that is, that's the reason why it's not, that's not what I'm trying to do. Remember, our job and mine is to save the city money as well as to complete the functions of what we, what we're set out to do and accomplish the goals and the missions of the department and the city. So I'll take an officer, again, if you're going to give me the money, I'll spend the money all you want, but again, that's going to cost you more money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I still would like to pull it out of the budget and not have it implemented 1-1. And then if we need to have a new police officer, my cut is that all the policemen need to be doing their admin. And to hire another person that comes in and is a middleman to fill out paperwork, I mean, the officer's going to be tied up and doing that paperwork anyway because nobody can come in off the street and do their paperwork for them. I mean, so there's going to be admin. And the question is, when do you invoke an admin? Is it 10 people? Is it 15 people? When do we, and, and what other city resources at city hall, city secretary, whatever, can, you know, help do some of these? So I'm, I'm still on the pull out of the budget.
And that's, that's what's really great about a staffing, like going through a facilitator with staffing stuff and that you actually hit a great point. Those are exactly what staffing models do and what we, kind of the exercise that we would go through is you kind of set trigger points on what we think based off of, you know, real world data, best practices and everything else. And then that provides direction to us on when we can kind of expect to put things like that in the budget. And then we have some kind of data metrics to kind of back it up. So I, I think that's a great point, which is why I kind of say, you know, if we discuss it at staffing time, we'll have a better idea of what that looks like.
Okay, thank you. Just also in that public safety position, I had thought about how many times I've stopped by the fire department and there's nobody there.
The doors are locked, didn't you?
And if, if somebody, if somebody were at the front desk and could at least let you in, you know, if down the road we decide to approve that position, it might be we could hose them up front. Maybe that would be too much, I don't know, but, okay.
Microphone, I think actually that was their intent.
Intent to do that, to get someone so that there'd be someone at the door, okay. So we'll go on to the senior accountant position. And this is the new position that they're recommending to work with underneath Kerry and on that organizational chart. So any comments on that?
I've got a bunch.
Okay, Dorothy, I'll start with you.
Well, do we want Kerry to say anything first?
Okay.
Let's take questions. I mean, I, I think this, obviously we know we need one. The, the ability to have two other, two accounting people between myself and someone else, that's not currently what we have. I, you know, the grant coordinator helps me do a small piece of what I need to do, but the, the accounting knowledge is not there. So the job description that I put in the packet I stole from the city of Belton, I didn't really rework it because I didn't really see the need to. I, I hope y'all see the need for this position. So I didn't really take a lot of time to, you know, own anything or anything like this. It still needs to stop with me when it relates to the city finances. So this will help me get there. And I mean, again, the reason why I brought it up earlier was I think the sooner we can get this position hired, the better.
Well, I'll just make a comment because I looked over this chart and thought about it overnight and everything. I'll start this time. I, we're, we're eliminating the executive assistant position, or we're rolling it in with city secretary. And we're eliminating the grant coordinator position. And I think that puts us in a perfect light to get someone who can do the accounting that needs to be done. And so I'm, I'm for it.
So I, I've wrestled with this because I know that we need to get the audits done and I know you need help, Kerry. Like, and I get that. I don't think a full-time position is the, is the right choice. I think I've danced around with a couple of different ideas, talked to some people, they're way smarter than I am in this industry. And you know, the, the idea of doing like a four to six month contract with somebody using them at like a 1099 that comes in, that helps Kerry get caught up.
Hey, we already have that. Yes, we have, we're paying outside accountants right now to reconcile our bank accounts.
I was not aware of that.
Yes, the council.
It was with the budget amendment that we did.
In February?
Right.
Yeah. So it took Kerry a minute by the time that budget amendment, the budget amendment gave $25,000 to a software that will help Kerry.
That was that Lewis?
Get the numbers where, what's it called, Kerry?
Unview.
Unview.
I will introduce you all to them, who cares to know where I want to take the city finances at TML.
And then another $25,000 to hire like an outside CPA firm, or I don't even know what they are, but they're an outside firm that actually does come in and help you. Excuse me. So since Kerry was just giving those funds in February, it took him a minute to go find somebody to do this and then bring them on board. So they've probably only been working for a month now, right?
Right.
But that's $25,000 for maybe a two-month project. The problem is, we haven't reconciled our bank accounts since May of 2019 and that was the last bank reconciliation I did.
They got reconciled through with Catherine, they just weren't right. And that's going to be the whole problem, so.
Right.
And that's the problem with having just me there to go back and clean it all up. That's where I, I thought that I can still continue to pay, you know, do all the other day-to-day accounting and just getting someone else that. You know, again, this, this also goes with Dalton's point about other stuff with succession planning, that at some point, you know, if I look at Belton's, they have four people in their finance department. It's not that we're trying to go from one, but.
Their city's a lot bigger than ours.
I, I know, but, you know, I wasn't trying to use that, but two, this still allows us, once we even get caught up, there's not going to be something that, you know, that I'm not going to be not doing. That I, I think that then here, this will allow us to absolve the grant position coordinator and it'll allow me, once we get caught up, then I can technically fill some of those grant coordinator roles too.
Also, if we're going to go out for debt, we've got to have audits done.
Right.
And don't, we've said this, we've got to go, to get grants. And we've got to go out to the credit agencies if we're going to float a bond and all that financing stuff. I mean, we need a finance director to, to be able to get us into debt. I know that sounds really weird, but, you know, if we want to continue to do our infrastructure, it's going to take Kerry at this level and then someone else reconciling bank accounts and credit card statements and preparing a trial balance and, I mean, there's a lot of behind the scenes stuff that.
Yeah, so, so I think to try to simplify this the best way that I can from the executive side is, what we have now as far as the outsourcing piece is, is a great help to clean up the past. What the senior accountant is going to do is to make sure that the future doesn't ever create the past.
But what I'm saying is, and even the, the people that we're paying for right now, right? They could create a system to make reconcili, bank reconciliation simple. I mean, it could be as simple as an Excel spreadsheet essentially. There's no reason that that shouldn't be done, other than the fact that Kerry's doing some of your job and he's doing his job. And so that's hard and like, that's not a slam because you guys have, you're juggling a bunch of balls. I get it, man, but like, I, again, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a CPA, I'm not an accountant. I just, I, when I see all these admin positions getting added, like, I, I, it drives me crazy, that's a problem with government.
Yeah, it is a dilemma because we are clawing our way out of four years of people in those positions that were not skilled to be in those positions and got us in trouble. We're in trouble, we got to get out of this if we're going to move forward as a city. And I don't think it's temporary as far as the functions that this position will be doing. If I thought it was temporary, I love outsourcing. I mean, I absolutely do. I was real excited when Kerry, you know, said that he wanted to bring somebody in that could just vote full-time getting us caught up, that's great. But you can't live your life on outsourcing with something that is a day-to-day continual function.
The budget is not that big, it's seven million bucks. And so, I mean.
It's not just the budget.
Right.
I mean, I've done the bank reconciliations, you cannot do them on an Excel spreadsheet.
Well, I, I know, I was simplifying, I know I was simplifying it greatly.
Yeah.
And I don't even know what software they use, like, I, I get it.
If we were asking for a budget officer, I would agree 1,000%, but this is not a budget officer. That's, that's my job, that's Kerry's job. The senior accountant is the one that is doing the day-to-day, day in, day out.
Writing checks, I know.
And, yeah.
Okay, so anybody else?
Yeah, I think that this is one of those specialized positions that very few people walk it around, have that knowledge. Because we don't work that way, Dorothy, you know that and I know that. This is a safety position. It's, it's what I'm hearing. If you don't have somebody in there that knows what the hell they're doing and is there every day taking care of business, we're going to wind up in a hole again. And either he quits doing, helping you and which puts you back in, behind the power curve, Dalton, or, I mean, if, you can do, I, I'm comfortable saying you're smart enough and got enough experience, you could do this if that's all you had to do.
Yeah.
But then who's going to help you?
And, and eventually that's going to go away, but we're not there yet.
Clone yourself and if you're not outrunning around doing PR stuff and getting stuff going, then we're not going to get the, some of the Bennys that are out there. And, you know, all the good things that happens when you're, you're in the meeting.
And.
So I, I, I think that, yeah, you can nickel and dime it, but then you wind up in the same damn hole we're in.
I, I think the next pivotal moment, you know, looking in the future, again, just kind of keeping it as simple as I can. The next pivotal moment for the city that the city can, one, expect their city manager and city council to really dive into the weeds and, and look at pivots and what the next step is, is once we can clean up the past. Once the past gets cleaned up and we have a plan to start going for, for the future, then I think some more difficult decisions can be made at that point in time that can start, again, start looking at sustainability in, you know, the way forward. Right now, unfortunately, we are having to go back in time and forward and it's a lot. I mean, it's.
I, I think also if, if you can get some help and get everything squared away, if it turns out that, you know, because of some software advances, AI, whatever, that it's not as necessary, you can eliminate the position.
I don't see that in the near future.
Yeah, I don't see that in the near future either, that's why I was thinking.
Okay, but there's, there's some things coming up on AI that are going to make just a hell of a difference in everybody's lives that we may or may not know about. And so, but I mean, it's not, if you have somebody to help and take care of business now in five years, who knows?
Oh, of course, yeah.
I'm not suggesting this next week, Dorothy, I'm not suggesting that at all.
Right.
Let me.
Can I add one other thing? You know, so we roughly in the pipeline have $3 million of grants coming in. So we're not just going to be looking at audits, we're going to be looking at single audits, which the city has never had to do before. So free money is good, but it also adds a layer of complexity that not one person. And again, at this salary, I'm not necessarily going to get a CPA, fully qualified right away. So the idea is to hire someone with talent and potential and there's always projects to have at city hall. So if, if they can take a lot of the things off my plate, I can go find us more money, free money. And, and that's going to be our goal. So it's not going to be like, holy crap, now I don't get to do anything. But I mean, this, this will set the city up for success. This is actually in my mind being proactive as a city instead of hiring someone that never needed to be hired in the past. So this will, this will set us up for success.
I guess what we're trying to say is that the, the position is going to be no kidding accountant. Well, and then.
Green eye shade.
Yeah, the green eye shades, but then you can.
I don't think you're going to hire one.
Do your executive position without having to worry about all this. I, I just, I, I don't know.
And, and the reality of it is, is any new person that comes in or any new position, I mean, outside of really specialties like fire, we are, we are not just looking at the technical side. I mean, of course, that's for technical positions, that's important. But we hire for character and train for skill and we're going to bring people in who are going to be jack of all trades. If you cannot adapt and, and bring more to the table than just accounting, then we're going to be looking for somebody who can bring in accounting plus other adaptable attributes. So that's.
The main thing.
The main thing is accounting, especially for the technical side of things, but.
That, that is very technical.
Yeah, I think real quick, just, I'll be brief because you guys have kind of already said generally what I'm thinking, but I'm not a money guy, I'm a monkey in the trenches, so it's easier for me to just kind of go, mm, mm, mm. But, you know, I want to take us back to meet the candidates, I want to take us back to home rule. For the last two and a half plus years, audits, 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 money, 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 finances, finances, finances. And I think we've all pretty much said the same thing, kind of dancing around, and if we don't start planning for the future, we're going to be doomed to repeat the past. I agree 100%, you know, we always talk about the bureaucracy and adding, you know, the administrative stuff. But truth be told, the administrative stuff is what keeps the city moving forward. So, you know, those folks, and I'm not saying you're bashful, so you know that. But the folks that work behind those front doors at city hall are the ones that keep us going the right direction. So I'm honestly of the humble opinion now that, you know, we, we heard this a lot previously about, you know, well, whose fault is it that we didn't get the audits done? I'll be honest with you, I don't care, I don't care anymore.
It's a mute point.
We got to move forward and I think this position, there's validity to it. I think it will help city hall, I think it'll help our citizens. And then I go back to what you guys said as well. We're looking at an organizational chart that has been restructured. Some folks are leaving, some positions are being absorbed, some positions just are not necessary anymore. 10 years down the road, if we take a look at this and we've got little robots running around dressed like Dalton, we may not need this spot, so. Well, yeah, so, all that to say, I support the position, I, I think there's more, I, I think there's a lot of validity to it and I think it's going to benefit us in the long run.
Since we're not really voting, I'm getting a sense that it was four people were for it for sure and one was debating, so it's, it's in. Okay, so next, on the next position.
One in, in the budget run of view.
So when does our contract run out with the outside accounting firm?
They were really just to help us get caught up through the audits. I actually have six months of in here, there, and again, it was just sometimes throwing numbers in here. I, I have $6,000 of consulting in here to kind of help us do some stuff. But like I said, I mean, really there, there is grant money all over the place. And whether we have been awarded them or we haven't, it, once we get caught up and pass the audits, like I said, it would be my goal is if I'm giving her more stuff and if I don't have things to do, it's finding free money for the city and that will be hopefully pay more than the, the salary that we have in front of us, so.
Thanks, Kerry.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I, I, yeah.
Can we take a quick break, five minutes?
Yes, can I say one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we do the break? We, we are, we're going to, we're going to go on to salaries next. I think the Marina has already been discussed and so I don't think we need to do that. But I just want to say one thing about brush bins, just in case I'm not here for the final talk. On page 15 in the gray, or 15 in the gray box, the third paragraph down, it says, "Staff recommends adding a small fee to brush bins to offset expenses. The goal is not to discourage use of the bins, but to ensure the service delivery model is sustainable." And when I, when we first talked about that with Dalton on Monday, I thought, that makes a lot of sense. I went home and something about it didn't just sit right with me, so I thought it through. It's a, it's a minimal, you know, amount of money that we're talking about. And I was at the library on Saturday because I'm a grandkid's here for library day. And one of the ladies I was talking to, one of the residents, I, I asked her a question because she had mentioned something about, we're not all old here, some of us are young and you have to think of all of us. So I saw her there and so I said, I'd like you to just tell me what you mean by that. And we, I started talking about roads and things like that, she said, every city does that. This is what makes Morgan's Point, Morgan's Point. This is community. We're here as, you know, with our, our library, we don't charge people to come to the reading program even though they get stuff, you know? And she said, this is community and this was, this is what makes us unique. And I thought, when she said that, I started to think about it. We are big users of the brush bin, so I'm going to say, and, and we've used them multiple times. And every time the fire department comes out and they're saying, we're being fire wise and whenever we can get you guys to load up these bins with your trash, that, your trash wood and clear up the land so that we will stop any potential fires, we're doing good. And we felt like, man, not only are we cleaning up our yard, but the city is, you know, it felt like community to me. The city is promoting this and I think we give, we donate money to the fire department every year, a, a little bit. And so we could maybe do more, but I think it would be, rather than putting in a fee, because I do know, if I think about people that I know who are very, very poor, they might not do it if they had to pay any fee at all. So if we just didn't. So if we just didn't have a fee, but said, you know, fire department would appreciate any donations if you want to give, you know, something to them, that would be my preference. So I just wanted to say that about the Marina. No, no further comment needed. Okay.
Yeah, so really, really, and just kind of why we wanted to put that in there, we didn't put any revenues, we didn't put anything into the budget for it. You know, this was kind of just a discussion point and talking point, but really just want to kind of address some things, you know, kind of for the future on why we kind of came up with this. We do about 1,100 bins a year, give or take, and one of the, one of the vehicles that's going to be replaced on here is the brush bin truck that carries the trailers. And so, really, from, what time is it now? Almost eight o'clock? So we're six hours in discussion about, you know, being conservative on the budget, trying to make sure that we have sustainable for the future, you know, for this. And so, again, it's not to draw on revenue or, you know, discourage it, it's about really putting a little bit of cost back into the fixed asset replacement fund, or making sure that the free service that we, I say free service, making sure that the services that we can provide are sustainable, because we have talked a lot about sustainability, and that's why we wanted to at least put the seed and, and plant the seed, because at a certain point in time, yeah, I wish we could always give free services, but we know that that's not realistic. And so just, it was, again, it was a, as a seed to be planted, because as things start evolving and we try to figure out, that service delivery model that we love so much could potentially go away if the cost of bins go up, or the cost of vehicles go up, or fuel goes up, or, again, any number of, of different things. So we're not, we're not even looking at trying to break even, we're literally just looking at putting some extra revenue to ultimately dump into the fixed asset replacement fund for the future.
Another thing that, that was on that, because that jumped out at me too, was the quarterly cleanup and charging at the quarterly cleanup. And the first thing that came into my mind is, like, you know, that was the most amazing thing, and being able to drop brush off there is a great thing.
Yeah.
Every time I go on quarterly cleanup, I ask myself, man, I wonder how much money we're making with all this recycled metal.
About 1,200 bucks a year.
Yeah, well, I looked, I, I saw it, I found it in there.
So what's kind of, and, and really just real quick on kind of the quarterly cleanup, you know, one of the biggest challenges that we have and the reason why we've talked about that, again, again, planting the seed, not, we didn't put anything in revenue, again, we just want to start throwing some, you know, some opportunities or concerns or things that we've, we've kind of discussed with other council before. Because one of our big challenges is, you know, we go through 10, 11 bins four times a year.
Quickly.
We either have a massive hoarding problem at Morgan's Point Resort or other people are using it. Now, we always say that we can, you know, we'll check driver's license or check water bills, you know, at the thing. Well, that's an administrative task that unfortunately, when they're going in and putting, you know, having to do the trailers and stay up on everything, it's really difficult to really truly enforce it. So again, food for thought, planting the seed. Again, we don't want to recoup the cost, we may be able to bring some ideas as far as for the resident side to make sure that we are only really serving the residents on that, and I think what will happen is I think we will ultimately get it to where we can only have to do two bins or three bins, because it's focused on Morgan's Point Resort. So more to follow on that one, and we can discuss more in the future on that one.
Well, and I totally agree with you, Dalton. I know that there's people that come over there and that aren't Morgan's Point Resort residents.
Really hard to enforce.
And we could, yeah, we could maybe think of something.
That could be a mid-year thing that y'all can do also.
Yeah, we could think of something. Let's take, let's take a good five minute break.
What triggered this was the $47,000 that we need to fund a, a truck to move that around the city, right?
Uh, so that, sorry, and sorry for the confusion on it. So the quarterly cleanup is about 20, 27,000 a year, give or take, depending on how many bins we use as it flux. The truck is going to be for the brush bins only.
Right, that's what I.
Yeah, yes, yes, ma'am.
So it's $47,000 to get the truck to take another trash, okay.
We, we.
Is that 60? Yeah.
So real.
$60,000 that we're putting in maintenance this year to pay for another truck to do the trash bins, plus for more trash bins. So that's what triggered.
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion of, yeah, we're making, we're making investments in it, and do we want to charge?
And, and I will say this on the brush bins, and I know we're going to get there, but since we're on the topic real quick, you know, it is in the budget for two brush bins. We are actually working with BJ and his crew, because one of the things that we're kind of splitting, and I actually, this is probably an important thing I should have brought up yesterday, so my apologies again, we're looking at also shifting the, the burning portion of the Fire Wise program over to the fire department, which also was kind of the rationale of having the full-time thing. So the, the Wildland Fire Service and some of the stuff that we, we provide with, you know, Tiflis and Texas Forest Service and all that, ultimately, the fire department would take on the burning portion of it. Brian and maintenance would still pick up and drop off the bins, and so we're actually looking at improving the service delivery model on that, to where the bins would not be out there for an extended period of time. And also, that's why we wanted to defund this year, the, or unfund, I should say, defund, doesn't matter, the maintenance position, because by doing that, we're able to free up one of BJ's maintenance guys to do more of the maintenance side than standing there watching stuff burn. So just so, so y'all know the rationale on.
Right, five minute break.
So we will cover that in rates, when we talk about all the different rates in the budget, okay? Yeah, me too.
Well, solving the world's problems, Pat.
I guess I'm just gonna, this isn't anything.
You can rap like S did.
They'd sing to you?
That's funny. Yes, my, my five-year-old heard Vanilla Ice for the first time, Ice, Ice Baby, and I guess for whatever reason, like, that stuck to her, and so she, I'm like, oh, Lord, it's like, loves that song. Yeah, yeah. Oh, really?
How funny is that?
That is funny.
All right.
Yes, ma'am, I'm back.
Okay, we have a confidential salary thing before, is that we're not going to talk numbers at all.
Correct.
Because we're on, we're live, and so we want to be careful with that. So I think probably, in my opinion, the biggest thing we have to do, I had a couple of questions that I asked Dalton about, and because I think our city secretary is going to go into a city secretary executive assistant position, it might be a good idea to compo, combine the, the job description so that that is listed in there, and I, I think we could look, you know, look at that down the road. Does anybody disagree with that or agree with it, or? Does anybody disagree with that or agree with it or? Okay. Okay.
So, and really with that, and I guess kind of the, taking the job description and, you know, not changing anything, you know, in there. Remember, this position's going to go from basically kind of the city secretary role to city secretary payroll, part-time municipal court, back in municipal court. And so there is going to be a lot more to that. And this is kind of goes back to where I, I agree, we can update the job description. I mean, really, in all honesty, from a human resources perspective, we need to update a whole bunch of stuff.
Yes.
So, I mean, it needs a massive overhaul anyways. And so, yes, we can reflect it, but I, I would, I would, I would argue from the standpoint of, with the city secretary absorbing, you know, ancillary duties and other things that are, you know, a continuation of, of, of stuff, I can support and justify the pay and everything going into it.
Yeah, and our city secretary's always done more than city secretary. It's typically not even halftime, and then they do payroll or human resources, go into the DMV to get all the vehicles, they prepare audit stuff for the auditors on capital. They do a lot. So I think when the, my concern is just with the comp study. I think the comp study went out, and I've read it, and they looked at a job description, but our city secretary is not doing that job. So it's a, it's a mismatch between the study and reality.
And.
So that's where I'm having real heartburn over that particular one.
The only thing that I would kind of disagree on it, you know, would be, if, if we're going to kind of using that, that thought process or analogy, like our utility billing clerks. We're submitting our utility billing clerk stuff, but every single job description in anywhere you ever go has duties as assigned. And guess what we don't do? We don't pay for those duties as assigned. So when we have a utility billing clerk or an admin assistant that's also doing human resources or is doing accounts payable or accounts receivable, we're not paying them extra for doing those duties, and we don't factor those in. And so I think in this case, we know that there are some part-time positions. Like, we dissolve the, the full-time municipal court, you know, position because we figured that we can do that kind of, you know, part-time role, payroll to, you know, into, you know, position. So, you know, I know, I know Councilmember Allen had brought up about, you know, ordinance and ordinance development. They do still write ordinances. However, legal also does as well. And that's even in this, in a city where, you know, you have a city secretary, assistant city secretary and everything. Typically, the way things, information flow will go through the city secretary, and then the city secretary will coordinate with legal to make sure that everything jives and, and everything is, is done the right way. So regardless of that, we can, I can absolutely agree that we need to update the job description. And if we want to tie those, those duties in there, I think the comp study is still reflective as far as pay of what they, what.
Of the title.
Of, of the title, because in here, we're, you know, in our city, we have a multiple hats, right? So because we have multiple hats that we typically don't factor in, where some of the duties in here, you know, may not be, you know, ancillary or may or not be part of this job description, they're just going to get with municipal court or payroll or, you know, benefits or, you know, other functions. Because again, every single one of our employees, you know, our team wears multiple hats and multiple things. Some of them we pay for, really from a city perspective too. And especially kind of preparing for the future as well. And why, why sometimes do you want to keep a comprehensive, you know, a comprehensive job description of expectations, right? Even though you may not necessarily be doing those, you know, all immediately. For example, we have a CM and an ACM, you know, so there can be some offshoot of certain things. However, you don't want to operate in a vacuum of just saying, well, they're not doing it now because if something happens, your city secretary in a city is the number three in the city. That, that is the number three executive position in a city. And so if you limit yourself on a job description from, from the beginning, you then are going to get the quality of, of people that you're going to have limited from the get.
I'm suggesting not limiting.
Okay.
The, the job description. I'm saying that whoever's in this position needs to fulfill all those roles.
I, I.
Right. And then honestly, just from this comp study, and I think it's on page twenty-six, I had a little hard time understanding how the city secretary is equal to the utilities director, the fire chief, and the police chief, and the maintenance director, and Catrice, the administrative services director. So they're all in the same category.
Oh.
And I have to feel like Taryn has huge responsibility for the city, and Jessie keeps our water. And to think that a city secretary, even if she fulfilled all those roles within that for our city.
Yeah, so.
The city secretary's only part-time of the job.
So, and, and I can definitely kind of see where that's at. And really, city secretaries, again, are typically higher than most of those positions. They are director-level.
Assuming they're doing secretary, the city secretary.
Well, again, and, and that's kind of to the point of, you know, you know, kind of, you know, jumping out of the weeds a little bit is that's where you hold your city manager accountable. If we're not getting what's, what's needed and done, then that's when you guys need to have conversations with me about, you know, hey, we're not fulfilling these things. I mean, that's, that's kind of the.
Hey, well, I'm here.
Perfect. And so, so as things start unfolding, you know, come October one and, and based off some of those changes, then absolutely. If we, you know, if we need to update the job description, either, you know, clarify some things, you know, add some, you know, additional duties responsibilities based off of certain things, or maybe we keep those as duties as assigned, however we want to do that. But, yeah, city secretaries are director-level positions. And in a way, even though, and, and I have different, you know, thoughts on, on this, really, when you look at the public safety side, yes, there's a lot of responsibility from a public safety perspective, but in a way, they're all different and they all have different functions. Because a fire, a fire chief is fire. A police chief is police chief. Where a city secretary, they got to deal with city council, they got to deal with, you know, with, you know, all different aspects of everything. I mean, there's, again, it's an administrative type of thing. And it's, there's a lot of responsibility and there's a lot of autonomy that also goes in with the city secretary role.
I just haven't seen that yet.
And, and, and hey, we're ninety days in, there's a lot that, that needs to be, you know, improved on. We're going to continue, you know, to improve on it. And so I think, you know, before kind of putting the cart before the horse or kind of saying, hey, well, this hasn't been done, you know, maybe we need to see kind of where it's going to go, and then hold me accountable to that.
Okay. So let's go also on that same page. It talks about the step increases. And if you look at the column, the, the second column from the, right, you're going to see that how much that step increase would be for each employee. And Dalton and Carrie are recommending a two-step for all of the non-managerial and our department heads and a one-step for the department head. I just want your opinion on that. And once we get that done, we can move on.
Real quick clarification, we talked about it briefly. You know, keeping employees and team, fair market value is more important than keeping ultimately directors in smaller cities because directors will never be at the level that directors are typically at in other cities. And so there is a compression there, but it's more important, the most important, to keep your, your employees, your, the little guys, you know, keeping them.
Soldiers.
The soldiers, there you go. Keeping them at fair market value or close, as close to fair market value as possible.
Yes, so any, any comments on that? Any thoughts on that?
Well, I'm assuming that the steps represent typically annual increases. So we're doing two years in one by doing a two-step or, correct me, what?
So this is why I don't like steps because.
Don't like.
Yeah, no, and, and this is why I don't like steps. So, yes, when we started the step kind of thing, it was because we had so many people that had tenure from one year all the way to fifteen, eighteen years, you know, in some cases. Actually, at the time, it was eighteen years. And so we had to figure out the best way to find people to put them on the spectrum without, one, maxing them out immediately, which of course you can't do, but figure out what we were looking at. And so we want to get away from the step program. The whole goal is to start figuring out the performance review, massive overhaul, all of that this coming year, and ultimately get away from the step program. And so, yes.
We're implementing it this year.
No, you, no, correct. And so.
My question is.
So what we.
Why are we doing two steps instead of one step?
So, to answer your question very directly is, yes, it was tied to years, but this year, this, this time, what we're doing is we're tying it to, to ultimately fair market value or to the ninety percent of midpoint and getting people closer to where they could be from the midpoint perspective. And then that way, we can go into the merit-based increases.
And this is why I wanted to see the data from like 2021.
I am going to require it. I've asked for it about four times.
And, and so we can get the data, it's just, here, here's, here's, I guess, the, the question that I have. And, and again, we'll, we'll provide the data, we'll get it.
Sure.
Because it's.
I know you will.
All of it's a mess. The, I guess the question will be is, from the council side going forward, what difference is it going to make going forward? Because we know there was a massive increase from 2021 because of the comp study that basically said, we took eighteen cities, we did this, this big comparison. So the data that's going to show in 2021, regardless of what that data is going to show, is, hey, it's way low compared to what it was when we did the comp study.
But I think that gives us a feel for the steps, you know, talking about focused on the individual paychecks of people. What happened to their paycheck from twenty-two to twenty-three? And it was a significant increase because the city took $250,000. I'd like to see that.
Yeah, absolutely.
How much increase did we give the employees last year versus now this is on top of? And so my question is, they weren't to midpoint when you implemented the compensation study in twenty-two, twenty-three? You didn't get them to the midpoint?
No, because we, again, we had to make sure we balanced city coffers and.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so we got them as close to ninety percent from that time as possible. Not everybody got there. I'm sorry?
Ninety percent of what?
Ninety percent of midpoint. Sorry. So, so ninety percent of midpoint. That's why, that's why the percent column is in there.
On this confidential sheet, it tells us what, where they are to midpoint.
I see.
Yes. And so that was the goal, because again, we were making sure that we focused on the city because we knew it was such a large hit. Because, again, this wasn't about, you know, oh, they got this great increase. Well, in a way, kind of the other train of thought was, they never got it before. And so in a way, they were always kind of behind. And so unfortunately, we had to play the catch-up game to get to where we're at.
I understand. I just, I think the data's important for.
No, I, I don't disagree. I think the only thing would, and I guess the question that I would ask is, is it important? Is, is it important enough to make the decisions on the budget this year going forward? Or is it something that we can maybe workshop and do something, you know, in the, in the fall or the winter? You know, along with some of the retreat?
So can I re-ask my question? So we're doing two steps, two years in one year. And what's the rationale of that? Because we're not doing a COLA?
Because we're not doing a COLA and to get them, again, closer to the, the ninety percent of midpoint. And, and again, kind of do it across the board. So, because typically, one, we didn't do the COLAs. Two, the health insurance, you know, obviously was a part of it, which is why we're not recommending the COLAs. And again, it's just keeping the employees, you know, at market value, which is why we didn't do it for the directors because of the compression.
Well, one thing to consider, and I, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure what I think about this yet. So one thing to consider, though, is that we did do a huge increase in salaries by the insurance that we provided. And so that's something to be considered too. So I definitely think they need a pay raise, whether it's one step or two is the, is the question for me.
Yeah. And, and I don't know off the top of my head. I want to say the last time I looked at like the CPI version, you know, that, you know, a lot of folks, I want to say it was like six point nine percent or something like that. The state's going up five percent. You know, we don't have this data because typically I'll provide the CPI for ever like recommending a COLA or something. But since we didn't recommend a COLA, we didn't really provide that, that, that kind of context or, or that data. So we can get you the CPI information as far as what a lot of cities are basing it off of. And we can also provide some other context as far as what other cities are doing.
So, and I'm going to go reflect back because my experience is in education, right? So I can remember there was budget crunches in the school district, right? So they're like, oh, everybody got a three percent raise or six percent raise. But it was an average of everybody, right? And when it came down to it, because of where I was in the steps, my raise was like one percent, you know? And it was sort of a slap in the face, honestly. But at the same time, I understood now, like, it had to be done, right? And so I, I think the insurance thing is a huge hit. Not to mention, now we're talking, we're going to help with dependent care, which is another hit. And so those, those things.
And, and, and really, I mean, I wish, I wish we had, again, the, the capacity to really dive into the employee, you know, review and everything, you know, to.
We're, 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 we are where we are.
No, no, I know. And so, and so, so, so kind of, so my mindset kind of going forward is, again, not operating in a, in a singular vacuum each, each year is, next year, when we go to that merit-based, you know, stuff, now we're going to be able to really get accurate as far as where people are because not only can we take into consideration the performance and the merit, we can take into consideration where they are in the spectrum of.
So I, I would just ask that since we did the extra insurance and we did the dependent care this year, would it be reasonable to say, let's do one step this year? Because they did get a big raise last year. And then next year, we can, I mean, nobody cares if you give them more than what they expect.
So.
If we go down, like next year, if we don't give them two steps, we only give them one, then they're going to go, hey, that wasn't.
Setting expectations.
Yeah, I mean, we're setting a higher expectation, I guess. I, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
So Carrie, do you have any feel for what that amount would be if we only did one step instead of two on the employee level? Because I know directors are going.
And so we can, so we can provide that for you. I mean, you know, without, you know, obviously going into it right now. I, I think from the contextual standpoint and the strategy standpoint of this, I'm, as city manager, I'm not going to recommend that. One, the budget that we've given y'all, even with changes or not, were revenues over expenses. You know, even without factoring in, in a, in a, in a gap. So, yeah, so.
Yeah, but with only two fifty in roads. So, any penny we find can go into roads.
I, I mean, and, and that is definitely, you know, something that council can recommend. I, I, as city manager, I'm not going to recommend that. That's going to be a decision that council will have to do as far as going to one step. We're, again, we're, we're recommending the two. Again, it kind of keeps things at market. We know we have the balanced budget this year. Again, we don't know what's going to happen next year, we do know what's happening this year.
Let me ask the question in a different way.
Throw some context though, too.
Yes.
What would be, if we take the word step out, what do you think an accurate percent would be?
Well, that's what I was just going to ask you.
Really, when I did the numbers.
Because I did one of these, and it's only like three or four percent, even by going two steps.
There you go. And that's where.
So, that's, that's why I want the group to hear that.
Okay.
Because is that reasonable?
That's where, yeah, for the bulk of this.
So forget the step language.
Right.
Right.
I, I can read, because really, the, the twenty-two one is weird, just the, the data points with that, the way they used to do some incentives or stuff like this, it was built into salaries, which isn't a true component of a step system. So when I was trying to do the numbers, I just need someone else to look at it. But, yeah, I mean, if I do it as a percent, you know, because really, whatever y'all's goal is with employees, if we want us to everyone be ninety percent, if you look at that sheet, there's only two or three that really aren't close to ninety. You know, there's eighty-nine percent, eighty-eight point nine, stuff like that. So this is trying to get us up to that ninety percent stuff.
Okay, so let's, let's throw that language out. We have employees today. What kind of percentage are we giving them for next year?
Oh, yeah.
Is it in the three to four percent range?
Yes.
And then council, think about that for a minute. Does that sound reasonable to you?
So let me, actually, be devil's advocate, you know, for our own logic. Completely different path real quick. No, we're, we're going to make this fun because it, really kind of thinking about this and talking with our directors and going through this, you know, and I'm kind of, I'm going to bring back the office manager stuff here for just, just a moment, okay? One of the big things that, that we do have, it's, it's an intangible benefit in the city, you know, is so long as we can keep it and provide it, is quality of life. And nobody knows or can define or put a value on quality of life, that it doesn't exist. But what we do know is people don't leave their jobs, they leave their bosses, they leave their environments, they, they, they chase the twenty-five cents, but not because of the twenty-five cents, but because of where they are and, and the culture that we're in. So to the point of that, I, I'm, I'm going to throw myself under the bus here. I, and I know this is not comparing apples to oranges, but the thing is, is I, I'd be willing to bet, talking with the directors and talking with, you know, Taryn and Schutzy and, and the team, they care more about the people to provide the services, you know, to the residents because that is the culture that we believe in. I mean, they come into our community to take care of our residents, and some don't even live here. One drives from Harker Heights all the time. And you know what? I would be willing to bet that they would be perfectly okay with taking a step raise if Chief Schutzy was able to get an office manager position because of the level of service and the service delivery and the customer services that they bring. And so I want to highlight that, not because I think that that's apples to oranges, you know, and it's a completely different spectrum. But I'm willing to bet, from having talked to, to Carrie, having talked to the team, they care more about having the team and, and being able to provide those services than they do, to a certain extent within reason, you know, about those salary increases. So just kind of food for thought on this. Again, I know how everybody feels about the office manager. I wanted to kind of throw that out there where I, I would be even willing to make the sacrifice potentially, even though it is completely different context, just to show our team that they care more about providing services and bringing value to our residents than in a way they care about a step.
Totally appreciate that, Dalton.
Yeah.
This is a chess move. That's all I'm going to say.
Hey, I, I mean, here, here's the thing. Think about it, what it is, it's all a negotiation. I, I mean, the bottom line is. But here's the thing, but here's the thing, though. The one thing you can never define, and I think we've done a phenomenal job at defining it in the direction that we've done in two and a half years, is we're at ninety percent retention rate over the past two years. That is, that is.
Out of curiosity, though, historically, what has the retention rate been in Morgan's point? BJ's been, what, twenty-seven years, twenty-five years?
So tenure's different than, you know, the high turnover positions. But here's the thing, though. You know, you know, our average tenure in the city is only six. And so when you look at retention rate, and, and really, a lot of their retention rate was not necessarily people leaving, a lot of it was people getting let. was not necessarily people leaving. A lot of it was people getting let go because they weren't living up, or they weren't performing to the standards that we expect, you know, for the City of Morgan's Point Resort. Here's the thing that you cannot put in my shoe, well, actually, you technically can, because it's my job, but where you cannot define it in a budget, you cannot define it in anything, is quality of life. And the thing is.
Let me just throw in about the person that comes in from Harker Heights. She had a medical problem, I want to say, two years ago. She was out for between four and six months. The city stood behind her the entire time, and we backfilled positions. Donna came in to help get water bills out. Catrice did not lose a paycheck during this period of time. That's the kind of city we are.
Yep, we're a family.
So we're, yes. And so salaries are really, really important. I mean, we want to, we don't want people to, you know, suffer.
Culture is important, too.
But culture is huge in this city, and we should be proud of it.
No, absolutely. And so, yes, to the point of the, the chess move, let's, let's call it like it is. I think, you know, I think it's one of those things where, you know, when we do put this all of it, all into a bucket, and we look at a balanced $6.9 million budget, you know, obviously without, you know, removing anything, and us having a plan going forward on infrastructure and everything else and do this, you know, do we really want to say, hey, you know, we, we don't think, you know, we think we know what's best, we don't need this position because we're concerned about the budget, we're concerned about this, but we're going to nickel and dime on a step? So yeah, it is a chess move.
So, question, couple, actually. So you already hit on one. All of this is budgeted, of course, which I keep coming back to. So it's in there, and, you know, we can, chess moves, we can move pieces and parts around. So last year, or last council bit the bullet with the, the study being done and bringing everybody up the massive 250K increase. So.
And most of that was in public safety, by the way.
Yeah. Oh, oh, I know. Yeah. So kind of the first thought I have is, you know, are we still playing catch-up, which I think you answered? We are still trying to bring our folks up to where they need to be. The midpoint.
And, and here's the thing, and sorry to cut you off.
Oh, you're good. Go ahead.
That's always going to be a moving target every year, because the one time you take that step back, and, and let me, let me actually kind of just provide some more context for you, going back to 2021. So when I came on board in 2021, we actually did a five, and again, this is, this is in a way, operating in a very unique vac- vacuum. We did a 5% raise for, for employees and a 6% raise for directors, and it still took $250,000 to get everybody up. So that's how big of an increase that was behind. So if we didn't, if we didn't push.
According to a compensation study, which, you know, we can go back and forth on that, but it is what it is, and we're using it.
It's a third party, it's not me saying it, and so.
I know, I hear you loud and clear, but it's.
So this will, my assumption then is, this will continue to get us closer to the mark, and we should, assuming, I guess my question is, will this be the last time, and I got it, things are going to change, but 250 last year, two steps this year, which, by the way, I support, just let me get that out there. I, I looked up cost of living expectations for, you know, the increase next year, and it's like 3.2%, so.
So I, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's, I, I mean, my, my question overall is, do we anticipate this being the last time that we are really going to have to, barring the economy, make any sort of, that one, important investment this way? Because I'm all for it. I think our, you know, I'm about taking care of our folks. So are, are we going to get them to where we are finally balanced, I guess?
All right. So to answer your question very directly and very politically, no. And I can't, I can't say beyond in anticipatory reasonable doubt that we're going to get there. But what I can say is there's going to be a difference between being reactive and proactive. And by, and by being reactive, by saying, man, we don't need to do it this year, we could play catch-up, or do, do more next year, versus the proactive side and saying, hey, we know where we're at right now. If we stay proactive, maybe, maybe one year, we realize when we do a comp study in a few more years, that we don't need to do massive changes. You know, so.
I would like to suggest, and you guys can say, the other things that we have talked about tonight, we talked about last night, ad nauseam, and so I thought we were ready to make a decision. So I think this is information that we should think about, a one or two-step process, whatever we.
And we need another column. We need one more year comparison.
Okay, yes.
Percentage of increase.
Right.
Yeah. And if we could get that by our meeting on Monday, then I, I think, I, I really think that, for me, it really helped me to go home, go through it all again, look at it, really think, because I came in thinking I was going to vote differently than I did. And I, and I had decided I was going to be open to reason and to really look at things and, and to try and make the best decision. And I feel like I, I feel like we're doing that tonight, you know. So I, I think if we need any more discussion on salary, we could probably just bring it up again Monday and go from there.
Yeah, we could, we could provide you all the data and.
Are you guys comfortable with that?
Is that okay with you? Okay. I think, I think we've talked about it as much.
I think the, the one thing that you're going to, I know you will, but it, I don't know how many times in, in my other careers, you had to go to the briefing, the presentation of healthcare benefits and blah, blah, blah. You walk in, you go to sleep, an hour later, you wake up and leave. I think the idea of the insurance for the, the change of insurance providers and the dependent care, if you look at, if you're, as an employee, you look at your total compensation, which most people don't look at, and that's not a slam, it's just the way life is. I want to see what my paycheck is. Well, if you can get people to understand that, yes, you're getting this amount of money, but you're also getting this, and if you had to pay for it other places, you would not have that much money because it'll be going to insurance or whatever. And that, I mean, if you really do care about the people, you got to make sure they understand it's not just a dollar on the, every week, it's the whole total. And that's why, if you're taking help with that, with the insurance, those kinds of things, that helps the family, it gives peace of mind. If the kid gets hurt, you get hurt, your spouse gets hurt, whatever, you've got something to back it up, other than the emergency room and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. And, and, no, and that's a great point. And, you know, I, the last thing that I'll kind of leave it with on this one is, and that's why I kind of stick with the reactive versus proactive. You know, there's, there's a balance between, you know, the reactive and proactive side. And that's why comp studies are great, because they actually take the, the data from multiple different cities to figure out where are we in line with those, the full compensation benefits and, and the whole shebang. You know, that, yeah. So I mean, I, I definitely agree, and, you know, and those are going to be those positions that, you know, hey, from a reactive area stand, reactionary standpoint, you know, you know, you start figuring out turnover rates is when culture shifts, because that's when they're going to chase the 25 cents.
And again, in government, you never expect to get paid as much as you get, you could in the, in the free market. But it's always the Bennys, and it's the culture. That's what keeps most people in government service.
And the other thing, too, like, sorry, I actually meant to say this earlier, and then I brain farted. The other thing, too, and the difference kind of in, in government, private sector and everything else, generations now, they don't spend 30 years in jobs anymore. You lose money. Every three years, you stay in a, in a position. And so when you're having to do that delicate balance of, of pay and compensation, you know, it's, it's tough, because as soon as, you know, you have a year where you're like, ah, we don't need to do this, and then boom, City of Temple or Belton, you know, do this, and then they're hiring 30 people, we didn't hire any. Then you have Exodus, you know, small Exodus's, then you have people leaving, and the culture shifts. So yeah, three years, that's, that's about average, and you can go make money somewhere else as soon as that one business.
We haven't really experienced that.
No, you're right. We, we've been.
Because you could be a policeman in Temple, or you could be a policeman in Morgan's Point now. I mean, I don't know what your priorities in life are, but Morgan's Point is probably a little safer, and.
Well, and so.
We have issues, but we don't have the Temple or Colleen.
No, so here, so.
So it's, it's, it's kind of apples and oranges. I hear you loud and clear, but we have to temper it with our culture.
No, and, and really, too, and actually, the police department's actually a great point, you know, you know, kind of getting y'all caught up on some of the culture stuff. Before we made a very difficult decision last year, we actually were, we were slated to lose four officers in a two-week span. Slated to lose four officers, and we were about to lose half of our force overnight because of leadership. And again, public safety is going to take the, the 25 cents probably more than any other position will. But as soon as we did that, people were sending their offers in state, and now we have a full department. So again, it, it's a delicate balance. We're never going to be perfect. We just have to assess the, the situation as it's kind of there. But again, reactive versus proactive.
So I was looking through this page that we had been going through, and it looks to me like we're about on page 12. We've gone through admin, and, and we've talked about the grants and all that thing. And we're at debt service fund, interest and sinking. And I, I just think this is just for, you know, I don't think we have to decide anything on it. It's just an FYI, but they did put.
Page 12 of the executive summary?
Pardon?
Page 12 of the executive summary. Okay.
This one.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
I was just kind of looking how far we got last night.
We're postponing payroll until we get more information.
Right. And, and I also thought it was just like, we just introduced it tonight, now we can all go home and think about it, and look at, you know, like, two steps is 3% and think about that versus the insurance and all. And we just, you know, I think we'll be better prepared to make a decision Monday. So I was just looking at this interest and, and sinking fund, and I see that no debt payments are included in the general or enterprise fund anymore. And I'm really happy to see that done like that, because it gives us a really good view of what we've got. And so I think that was a change this year, was it not, Carrie?
It was the final change. So we had always slowly started incrementally getting it back into it. If you look at your sheet, you can see where it was zero. So we've slowly incrementally got it back in. This is the first year that it is entirely into interest and sinking, nothing in.
Yeah, that's clear.
So, and then the capital outlay, I think this is, there's various capital outlays, there are new vehicles, equipment, et cetera.
And all that's listed.
Yeah, and 77% of it was completed already this year. Then on page 13, in the square box, it tells the things that were in, either in progress or delayed for a reason. You know, like the community pool, the shade cells, they were delaying them to make sure that they're not blocking the view of the lake and that they're done correctly. So that's what that was for. So I don't think we need to say anything more about that.
And the only thing I'll add to that is, that's, that sheet is relatively new. We've been doing it for about three years. We said we want to show a year-over-year of what we're looking for in capital.
Which sheet?
Sorry, the capital outlay sheet, sorry. The one that shows the percentages. So the memo breaks down just narrative of what the capital outlay sheet shows.
Page 23.
Yeah, page 23. And so that way, you can see, you know, we put the percentages of, of things on there and completion. So.
Do we want to look at that now, or do we?
That's up, that's up to y'all. I just wanted to point y'all to that.
As I'm looking through the rest of this, if we just flip through it real quick.
Yeah, let's just, yeah, get through it.
I think, I, I think that, you know, we talked about the municipal court, the police department, code.
Well, just, I mean, information technology, I 100% support outsourcing it.
Yes.
Administrative services, that's Catrice and everything she does, and she's gotten a lot more responsibility over the last few years. Communication and marketing, you know, that's new to us, and I think Dalton just gave us the list of the $45,000 that he's expecting to spend on the top of page 14. So we probably need to look at that at some point. Okay? And then municipal court, sorry.
Well, let's just, let's look at that then now, at the top of page 14.
The 45?
Yeah. Wait, I mean, let's, let's just look at what we're going to look at in this section right now, and then we can go to that.
And so while y'all are looking at the communications and marketing budget breakdown, it's really important to know, and, and we, we broke it down this way, just to show you the different funds and the accounts that, you know, communications and marketing-related activities or, you know, flyers, whatever, is taken out of. Most of this stuff has been there, we're going to say year-over-year, because we've always done events, we've always done, you know, marketing, we've always done some of the stuff. So really, the new stuff on there is going to be the archive social, and then the flash vote, that's, that comprises probably the, the newest type subscriptions. And really, flash vote is going to be the survey-based stuff that's going to allow us to really reach out to our, our residents and provide kind of micro surveys and, and gather data. And, and the archive social is the, basically the social media protection that we need to cover under the PIA or the public information. Since we can't hide or we can't delete stuff, we have to archive it and hide it. This is that, that kind of safety.
You guys following that on these sheets? Okay. So roughly, of the $45,000 that's in the budget this year, roughly, what did we spend last year? I know it's all over the place, but was it 30? Was it 20?
I would say, if I had to make a, a, a good assumption, because again, I can get back on that information for you.
Okay, I'm just curious, because I think it's.
I think it's about 25 or 30.
Okay, because I think it's a good selling point.
Yeah.
If we decide to keep all this, that the city is investing, I never knew that the city funded a lot of that stuff. I thought that, you know, just the volunteer organizations were pulling together, and they got sponsors, and, you know, the jump houses are sponsored by businesses and et cetera. So I think it's a selling point to our residents that we are, this is what we're investing in community activities. And from what I hear from surveys and everything else we've done, our community loves community activities.
And so really, yeah, absolutely. So there is a, a huge kind of fundraising effort from different organizations. The city always provides, you know, some in-kind labor, and, you know, I'm on, I'm going to say minimal monetary stuff, but we usually try to contribute, especially if it's a large city function. About, I'd say, probably about two years ago, we really started upping the event budget, when we really started diving into events and planning for the future. So I would say, you know, when I first came on board, it was probably maybe about 10 grand. Last year, it probably went up to, you know, 20, 25. You know, each year, we've tried to scale it up a little bit. Last year, the big, the big thing that we kind of took on after some trial runs to make sure that it was what we wanted to do, was partnering with the fireworks and, you know.
Summerfest.
Summerfest. So that, that was kind of some of the initial stuff. So yes, it is a combination of community support, community engagement, donations, fundraising, and then the city chooses to kind of fund the, we'll, we'll call it the larger end item. You know, the ban potentially, the fireworks was a big one.
How much did we put in those fireworks, do you know?
10,000, which was kind of great, because then we were.
Awesome.
So we were actually able to, with the partnership, you know, with that, one, we don't have to get in the firework business, which we don't want to. Two, we were, you know, being able to fund it. They actually were able to double the amount of fireworks that they were able to do, since they were doing it anyways. So that's why the show went so long, why it was so good. And we think, we, we anticipated, I think, about 5,000 people or so at Summerfest last, or this year, and about 3,500 last year. So yes, so we've slowly increased, you know, some of the promotional stuff. You know, again, some of the community, or the, the community pride things, making sure council has, you know, shirts. We're working on, you know, I say uniforms, they're not uniforms, but, you know, community pride things, you know, some consistency, some standards across the board. So yeah, the biggest, the biggest change this year is going to be the archive social and the flash vote.
So when I was looking through these budgets, there was a subscription for something, and I just, I, I don't know what it is, and I just was curious. It was Lewis and McLean?
Yes. So Lewis McLean is, they're, they're GRA now. And we actually, we can get y'all set up with them. It's distributions for everybody. But what it does is, it pulls in this, I say this group. This guy's from McKinney, he's been doing the, in the government sector for decades, and he actually datamines all of the new sources in Texas, and he sends them to the email for relevant stuff. So like from grants to, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and municipalities, you know, around Texas. A lot of great information in there. I mean, there's things that we find on grants or funding sources, or sometimes, you know, you'll see a city's having a problem, and you're like, oh my God, we have a problem, you know, and we'll call up other city managers. So there's a lot of collaboration with there. We can set y'all up. It's about, I mean, we usually get 25 to 50 emails a day, so you have to actually set it, what? So we.
Esther can consolidate them for.
Well, so, so actually, that would be, that would be in, that would be an IT function. That would be an IT function. But yes, we can set a rule to, and I dump it into a separate Lewis McLean folder, but it is a, a phenomenal source of information every morning.
I went to the website, because I was curious what it was. There was lots of things that I Google searched, and I was like, what is that? And so I, I.
Yeah.
I spent hours and hours going over this.
No. And so the other thing Lewis McLean does as well, and, and again, we can get you set up on it, he actually does like roll, you know, rolling 12 sales tax. He, he's a very analytical guy, and he goes into actually real-world analytics for, you know, for cities across the state. And, and so our distribution list is unlimited, really great resource And so our distribution list is unlimited, really great resource just to see what is happening in other cities all the time. I mean, these, our team actually hates it, they cringe every morning because I will send very specific things that are targeted to, you know, different departments on things that we can look at. And it has really drives some thought process on, hey, maybe we could look into this for our city. And then they send, you know, me stuff that they're looking at as well. And so we kind of have an idea from a vision side of where folks are at. So we can get that set up for y'all if you want. Really, really good, really good subscription.
And I will put it in a separate folder because I'll just have to read it when I am in the mood to read a lot.
If you miss four days, you'll have about a hundred in your-
Oh, great, terrific.
But most of the time, you can just go through and-
Pardon?
Let me know if there's something I need to look at.
Dalton will let us know.
Well, so typically-
I wouldn't mind getting it for a period of time.
Yeah, no, so typically, and just like if you get a random, like I sent you a concrete one, I think, a while back. So I will send council members as a group and also as individuals, if, you know, you've talked about a project or something you like, you'll get, if you get a weird Ford, that's Lewis McLean.
So think about this one, the forty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, yeah, that's another one. We've got that. So then, turning the page to our, we went over police department already. I don't think we really need to talk about municipal court. I mean, there's things that we could do with the municipal court. We could make our mayor be the judge ex-officio, but he would have to do all the training. That's what I read online. But anyhow, we don't, I don't think we, I'm just going to, we don't want to do anything.
Ted had talked about the different possible revenue streams with the tickets. And I really think we need to approach that because we're talking about how can we get more money and we need more revenue, we need more revenue.
One of the things I will say, and I think this is going to be more of an executive session function in the future, we really need to dive into an executive session and talk about the courts.
Okay, okay. All right, yeah, so it's not to be talked, we don't need to talk about it now. We talked about police department already and then, and maintenance, parks and recreation. And from what I understand, we've, Parks and Rec is going to come up, we're going to actually vote on that ordinance.
Yes, I have a draft application-
At council.
That hopefully Ophelia can get in the packet for us. But I sent it to you guys this morning.
And then, so we'll be addressing that. But I don't, there won't, there won't be anything in the budget this year for Parks and Rec unless we make a rule down the road to put something in.
Yeah, I think the way it's structured is that they're going to, well, it's a good question because the, one of their first tasks that they need to do is to update the master plan.
Right.
I have zero idea. We might have to authorize those funds when the committee is set up and they come to us and ask us for funds for a study. But they probably will need something, you're right.
And that's, and sorry to cut you off, so that eighty-five thousand dollars in engineering fees is kind of spread throughout. We actually increased the engineering by about fifty thousand dollars. Some of it was allocated to maintenance and some of it was allocated to the marina for those exact things. We don't, and we'll dive into it a little bit further, but now's the right time. We didn't put specifics as far as, hey, we want to go out for this or we want to go out for this in preparation, you know, for the Parks and Rec Committee and again, for future planning with city council and the comp plan. So we are earmarking some of those funds in anticipation that we know y'all are going to use them for different projects, like architectural design, landscape architecture, updating master plans, et cetera.
So here's the question for council, in my opinion. There's eighty-five thousand dollars in engineering costs that are undesignedated. And that's eighty-five thousand dollars, we could just go put into roads and then as issues come up, we can approve the funding for, you know, the road study, if that's the direction we want to go in, updating of the master plan. So we can add funds to the budget as we decide what we're going to do, but there is eighty, and it's just a different philosophy of how you budget. There is a, you know, a definite-
So I, and I'm sorry to cut you off, so I had actually got some clarification today on it. So I've been diving into tax code, budget codes, making sure that I fully understand kind of everything, you know, on the budget amendment side. And there is a specific tax code, don't ask me what it is because I've looked at too many today, when it comes to adopting budgets. And when we, when we look at budget amendments, and I'll send you the information so you have it and so we can make sure we're all on the same page with it. But really, the law ultimately says that budget amendments, when it impacts kind of the bottom line, should, unless, in the way they word it is, unless it's an emergency or life limo eyesight type thing, then you cannot do technically a budget amendment unless it's for a very specific thing. And the caveat to that is, for example, in the discussion now with the eighty-five thousand, if you kind of go into it, into the budget saying, hey, we can use this for this, but we're going to go and do this later, that's what makes it illegal. Is because when it, so if you earmark those funds and say, we know we're going to use it for engineering or we know we're going to use it for landscape, or potentially, we say, hey, we're going to earmark this into, you know, into this. But if you earmark it to roads, yes, you can move it from roads back into, you know, into something else, like if you decided not to use it. But you wouldn't be able to go do it a budget amendment just to add more, i.e. eighty-five thousand dollars to the budget unless it was an emergency.
Well, what about if we approve to update the master plan for our parks?
You, absolutely, so if y'all want to-
That is a change to the budget.
No, and so the reason why, the reason why, well, as far as you're talking about before or now.
Okay, we go in and don't have any money set aside for updating the parks' master plan because we don't know what it's going to cost. We know it's going to happen at some point. We know it's going to happen, let's say, in March. Why can't we do a budget amendment at that point to authorize funds, call it unrestricted, I mean, call it pulling it out of fund balance, call it pulling it out of whatever you want? But we've decided to take on a new project mid-year.
Yeah.
You're telling me unless it's an emergency, we are unauthorized?
I'm going to, I need to dive into it a little bit more.
Yeah, that doesn't-
And I want to talk to the city attorney because the way that the-
That doesn't sound right to me.
Well, but in the way that the ordinance is, or sorry, the way that the statute is written, it basically says you have to go into the budget, you know, with every, with no ill intent or with every possible, you know, thing. And so that's kind of why we earmarked it was, again, for that anticipation where the law, if challenged, and again, I'll confirm it with Neil, I'll dive into this a little bit more for edification because this is obviously important, you know, like, for example, the water tower stuff. That's obviously not necessarily an emergency, but at the same time, we never really planned for it because we didn't know what to plan for. When we look at kind of the parks' plan, if we don't earmark any funds for that, then the way that I'm interpreting the law and the way that I'm reading it, it says, you guys knew this was coming, you can't just do an amendment because you just want to change, change it.
Okay, well, Dennis was real clear to us yesterday that we could go ahead and approve the budget and we could make changes later. So I'm hearing mixed signals on this.
But that's why I did the confirmations and looked through the statute today because when he said that-
Let's be clear because-
When he said that, that-
That makes a big difference.
Well-
That's what it said in here too, that when we set a budget, unless it's an emergency, you can't go changing the budget.
And then the-
You cannot amend the budget.
Hold on, hold on. The, again, the other part of that is, you know, if, let's say that, that planning and zoning or, because this is where, this is where it changes from the law standpoint. Because we're talking about this right now, if we take funds away from the parks' master plan and we're like, we'll just do it mid-year, and I kind of get the understanding of it because again, it's, we're talking about the plan, you know, for the future, where certain things that we have done were unplanned, not necessarily an emergency, but the other caveat or the other prong to that is, you did not intentionally create a budget that you knew you were going to amend later.
But I don't have an amount. I guess that's why you're earmarking eighty-five thousand arbitrarily, because we don't know what the amounts are going to be.
And the reason why we did-
We don't even know where it's going to go.
And the reason why we did it arbitrarily was because of exactly that. Now, that being said, I think we're going to call it a gray loophole, but I'm comfortable, at least from a legal standpoint, and I'll, again, I'll get more confirmation from the city attorney, is I think if you did move the eighty-five thousand in the roads, just know that if we wanted to do the parks' master plan, we're going to have to basically do a budget adjustment and pull funds from other where. Now, here's where I think I'm comfortable and confident in saying that we're going to be okay. Every year, we are revenues over expenses. And so maybe we say, look, in six months, we reevaluate it and we're like, hey, we're, priorities have shifted, something else has shifted, so I don't think we need to do a budget amendment. I just wanted to make sure from the clarification side.
Some of our, even our undesignedated funds if we need to-
Correct. You can budget adjustment that, and council can approve that if it's within the budget. So the way the law is basically saying, and again, I understand it after I started diving into it today, was they don't want you to say, to the, and that's why I wanted to confirm it, you know, from what Dennis had said or what the mayor had said, was it didn't seem right that you could, oh, just go create a budget and then change it whenever you want all willy-nilly, and you can't. You gotta, you gotta have a plan.
Budget amendments and adjustments, this brought up a really good question on page twenty-two.
Yeah, so budget adjustments do not change the bottom line.
Right.
Budget amendments may change the bottom line. Or they're going to be substantive in nature that by the end, you're going to have to rebalance everything.
So my question was this, it's basically, why are you the final authority on that as opposed to the CFO?
Well, ultimately, my job is on the line because everything filters down from the CEO, but it is a team effort. And so there are the checks and balances and the internal controls that we do. And so it ultimately starts with him, but to the point of having a city manager or CEO, the buck lies and falls with, ultimately, council and me.
Sure.
But if he fails, then I'm ultimately the one responsible for that because of it. So a great example is-
I would love to know the answer to that question.
Yes, so no, I, again, I-
Yes, that makes a big difference in the whole tone of what we're doing.
Right, so that's what we need to bring up on, you know, talk about that on Monday in our-
Yes, so I will have some more clarification and I'll go with Neil's.
The other thing I guess we can do is that if we decide to do a master plan for the parks, we will just be over budget. It'll be redlined that we spent ten thousand dollars that we didn't budget for, but we approved it and we all know we approved it. We just can't just amend the budget for that. So we can still do it, I would think.
So, and again, this is, this is where, this is where things are just, and again, I'm not trying to do any kind of, I looked into it specifically because it raised a red flag with me as well. And I understand the rationale and the reason why from, you know, the constituent standpoint, you know, just go create a budget and then do whatever you want. That's where the internal controls, adjustments and stuff come in.
And that's where council does resolutions and whatever to appropriate funds.
Absolutely. So, so no, I think we're all on the same page, but I will get clarification of, on that, that law specifically.
Yeah, the only issue I have with that, and this is just, again, my monkey brain, is I think we just have to be careful if we, and using your example, if we pull that eighty-five out and we stick it into roads, because we are all so sprung-loaded into roads, I just want to make sure that, you know, we keep that in the back of our mind, that we don't go reaching in going, now we have, what, three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars? So if that makes sense.
We're probably going to spend a million.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but-
So I mean, any, any amount we can put into roads is positive.
So, no, I agree.
So real, real quick and kind of-
But not at the expense of other things.
Well, not at the, yeah, of the critical-
And I guess the point is, from my concern is, I'm out there on the roads, I want to see that, but that's not the only thing I care about.
Yes, yeah.
And I don't want to, I mean, we haven't talked about it, but what he was talking about revenue versus expenditures.
Yeah.
We're going to eventually get into the-
So let's, let's get through these last couple pages and then we'll do that, we'll look at that page, and I'm going to ask Carrie to do it for us, revenue versus expenditure.
I'm just trying to get a philosophy.
Yes.
There's a lot of different ways to bring money in. If you're always looking for ways to increase the amount of money, and you don't understand what you're doing because you're screwing the people, you're nickel and dime them. You're going to put parking meters, whatever, whatever. Then you've lost what we just spent a whole bunch of time talking about, which is character, culture. So when I look at these things just simplistically, if you've got this money coming in and you spent this month this amount and you're positive, that's great. The fact that you can get more money at the expense of the people, I don't think is a good idea. Chasing money just to be chasing money, to me, doesn't make sense. Because my overall goal is not how much money can we make.
So where's that coming from on the discussion we just had? What was?
Well, anything that we do.
Just talking his philosophy.
Oh, I see.
When, when, you can raise all kinds of things, nothing, anyway, we'll talk about that later, but I just want to get that across. Just because you can make money doing something, doesn't mean it's a good idea for the community.
Oh, I agree loud and clear, and hopefully we'll get into rates, if not tonight, Monday.
Yes, so I was just going to go, I'm on page fifteen, I was just looking at the maintenance, I think we've read this already, but the maintenance budget was up twenty percent because they have two brush bins approved and a new vehicle. So that makes a lot of sense.
Right.
So I'm just kind of bringing that up. The library has a budget based on a grant that's supposed to come in. If that grant doesn't come in, I think it will still cost us as a city ten thousand dollars, or twelve thousand into the library budget.
That would be a great example of, like if, let's say the grant didn't come in and there's ten thousand in there, hey, we could potentially, you know, council could reallocate that to a parks' plan. So that would kind of be like a budget adjustment that you could kind of do things, you know-
So that's just, that's, that's with the library and, you know, not that we would necessarily do that.
Yeah, but there was an intent, if you go back and read, I don't know if it's a resolution or an ordinance, but to allocate this money, it was based on a grant. And Pam stood up there and she said exactly how she was going to use the money. So if we don't get the grant, I think it's a whole new ballgame, you know? I mean, it does need to go somewhere else.
Right.
Because unless the library can come and tell us, you know, we're still going to do all these things and we still want the ten thousand. But it was based on a premise and it was pretty clear in the resolution what it was for.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yes, all right, so that's with the library.
But the next year, since you had that question, it would be, there would not be an expense, there would be an expense but a matching revenue, so it would be just a one-time.
Yes, okay, yes. So that was based on the grant. And then the pool, looks like the pool has increased in number of residents and who are using the pool on page sixteen, you'll see that. And it's, it's actually a moneymaker for us at this point.
Yes.
Kind of, and we have to put forty-six thousand into relining the pool and into the chairs out here, there, some of them need replacing. So that's in the budget.
But the capital isn't, the pool doesn't make money including capital. It makes money from operations.
Correct, yeah.
So the city invests the money from the capital?
For the capital improvement.
Where, where, kind of the perspective of that, you know, going back, you know, two and a half years ago is actually inverse. It was losing about fifteen thousand dollars in operations. So once it started making money operationally, we were then able to reinvest those funds, you know, back into the, to the pool to, you know, to council member Clune's point of not arbitrarily just getting money, but being able to reinvest it back in, which we weren't able to do two and a half years ago.
Right, okay. And then programs, projects and facilities. This would go for things like sending us to TML, you know, conference that we're going to go to, pay for those kind of things in the city. It mentions that it's down twenty thousand this year because last year, this microphone system, and we don't have to do that again this year. So that's, that's on that one. Then the fire rescue, we've already talked about fire department. And I think we've already kind of talked about the water department. They have, and their budget is up sixteen point five-nine. And I think if I'm, if I remember right from what I, in the study, I think this has to do with reallocation of some of the salaries of the city manager and the CFO into the, into the water, water and sewer department. They were, they took it out of the general fund this year, their total salaries. They have fifty percent for Dalton and Carrie, they took fifty percent and put thirty percent into water and twenty percent into the marina of all their, of all their cap, of their salaries and expenses that go with it. And then there's a small part, thirty-five percent or something is the city secretary because she does some work for that too. work for that, too. So, if I, if I understand right, that's why that budget is up sixteen percent. Is that correct?
Yes, and, and really, you know, not diving really into the semantics of it, I'm gonna say it's nonsubstantive in the, in the sense that it doesn't impact the bottom line. So, we can always, at any point, based off of, you know, future discussions, we can figure out the splits and how council best wants to see those splits, so.
Yeah, I'd like to just make that as a pending item, and I don't know if it's the fourth quarter, if it's October, November timeframe, but whenever you're ready to talk to us about that, because.
I mean, I think for this fiscal year, I think it makes sense for, for me to make the journal entry to, since that's the way the funds were budgeted. But I think going into this budget, the way I kind of had even proposed of, let's just split mine and Dalton's salary, because cities do this all the time, but let's base it on headcount. So, when I just ran the general numbers, it was seventy percent general fund, twenty-five percent water, and five percent marina. Basically, we have one out of thirty-five employees in the marina, roughly five percent, you know, seven water, and by the time you kind of do six people in Jesse's department and one lady up front, that's roughly twenty-five percent. And so, then if we keep seventy, yeah, then that gave us like twenty-eight employees in the general fund with the, based on the proposed ones.
I think that's a smart way to.
I think that actually is more realistic.
That makes a lot more sense than what was done. The seventy percent to general fund, twenty-five to water, and five to marina.
We all want to agree and give Kerry guidance to go ahead and do that?
I still will adjust this year's to match what we had.
Not everybody agrees.
No, 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 I'm asking.
Yeah. I, I, we talked about this a little bit last night, and I think we talked about funny money or, you know, I think in the interest of transparency and being upfront, just put it on the line item. City manager gets this amount of money.
And, and so to, so kind of to that point, once, once some of the stuff that we can do as far as transparency that actually is gonna be user-friendly, forward-facing, that is ultimately gonna kind of be on, on the ticket. The flip, the flip side of that is, though, the flip side of that is, even though everything is public record and government, you know, blasting everybody, I don't care about mine, mine's a moot point, but blasting everybody else's salary out there, you want to try to be as confidential as possible.
I'm not saying about putting it out on the table, I'm just saying.
But it will be, like, if you put it in the general fund as a one-line item, then I, I see both sides of it, but I.
I can, too.
Yeah.
But it, it looks funny. It looks like you're trying to.
I could go either way.
Hi.
I actually like the McGregor sheet.
You can make the argument that it does look like you're trying to hide stuff.
No, it, it does.
And if you just put it out there, then you don't have to worry about it. Because if you say, okay, you're doing, you get seventy-five percent of your money from blah, 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 you've got thirty-five employees plus all of us and everybody else in the world, what are you gonna prorate everybody?
And so.
And so, it's just like, you know.
Yeah, and so that's where the, that's where the budget book.
It's a philosophical.
No, it is, and, and.
I mean, honestly, there's no right answer, Pat.
Oh, yeah, there, there really isn't, and, and really.
I'm just saying, it, it looks a little funny, and, and I don't think.
And we're, and we're doing no different than other cities, you know, again, we're trying to stay at least on par with what other cities are doing, you know, in some form or fashion. That's where the, the budget book or the CAFR kind of really comes in, which we, we just don't have, which we're going to, hopefully, next year.
It's just.
And, and that's where there's gonna be the more transparency component. So, yes, I agree a hundred percent, and we just, like, like this year in the detail, we did put what the split was. So, if somebody looks and says fifty percent, times it by two. So, no, we, we understand the whole transparency piece, and we're trying to do our best with that.
It's just, you know, there's, we, as, as a society anymore, there's not a whole hell of a lot of faith in government to begin with, so.
Yeah.
If we can make ours just a little bit better.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's where I, I like the McGregor sheet. So, that handout I gave you, it even shows the split, the total salary, and then that way you could tie it back to the.
That's nice.
Well, do we wanna make a decision on that, or do we want to just talk about it on Monday when we talk about salaries and everything else?
If y'all are good with a very simple one that y'all kind of talked about, and everybody's good, then we can do that, because it doesn't impact the bottom line, and we can move on.
Seventy, twenty-five, and five. What do you think?
I think that sounds very reasonable, and I like that we have methodology behind it.
Done.
All right.
Easiest thing we'll do all night.
Welcome.
And it adds up to a hundred percent, so we're good.
And then talking about the marina, because we just changed that, that allocation, then the, the numbers will be different on there, and we'll see that on Monday also. But one of the things, just on the marina, Ronnie brought us some great information tonight, and I'm glad to see that we're moving forward to fix these things. Something that, I think the marina's another one of those community things that has, it's kind of a sacred call for many people. It's been here a long time. And so, I, I kind of would like to have us think about those re-floating of those remaining docks. As the marina brings in enough revenue, let their monies pay for that, and don't put it into a capital improvement project, and just kind of keep the marina a little bit separate from the rest of the city.
I think that's what Kerry's and Dalton's intent is going forward, is that we're gonna have this CIP and FARC, or whatever it's called, Fixed Asset Replacement Plan or Fund. And so, the excess funds of revenues over expenses for both water and marina will be designated funds, not restricted, but designated funds moved into the CIP, correct me if I'm wrong, and the fixed asset plan, so that we can say, the floating of the dock for, you know, the last five years, marina has brought in this amount of money, and we're starting to spend it. But we can tell the residents, we're not using city money.
Right.
We're using marina money. And I think that's the point that is the most important to me.
No.
So, so.
Sorry. Marina is the city. The city is the marina.
I'm sorry, it's a fund. I'm, I'm talking accounting, really.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a, it's a marina.
We're talking the same language, and we're really not.
Yeah, so.
Well, we have a general fund, water fund, and.
You know, the, the, the marina is one of the huge.
It's why I bought my house.
There you go.
No, I, I hear you loud and clear.
Okay.
But I'm just saying.
In the number, in the.
In the numbers, we can say that, you know.
Sure, sure.
And if the city needs to fund for something to get the marina out of trouble with something that, an emergency that happened, the city will step in. It is part of the city, but I'm just saying.
But it's a self-sufficient enterprise that has been more than making money over the last.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the big thing from the legal side is, no matter what, it is a city asset, therefore it is public space, you know, ultimately. And, and where the CIP fund really comes in, which we kind of saw some stuff when we first came on board, as far as, we're gonna call it departmental animosity, was, well, I'm, you know, my department makes money, so I should get to use it. Well, my department makes more money, so I should get to, and that was kind of some of the things that were prevalent. Where the CIP fund really helps with that is, it allows you to put money back into a system that you can fund over time for the needs of the community at that point in time. And so, regardless of whether it's an enterprise fund and self-sufficient, or it's a, a general fund, it doesn't matter, the taxpayers are supporting those things, period. Because it falls under the city, it is taxpayer-supported. It is a subsidiary of the city, no matter what. And so, one year it might be a fire truck, for example, and it's gonna be multiple different things getting funded. And then another year, it might be, oh, we need to put a, another water storage tank or something. So, then you're gonna pull revenues and assets into, you know, from marina and the enterprise. So, it's, it is a conglomerate, which the CIP just cleans up, cleans it up operationally, financially, and as you start going out for debt, then to everybody's point on, on where the funding's coming from, when you have a CIP schedule, hey, we're gonna pull a hundred and fifty thousand out of cash capital, we're gonna pull, you know, a hundred thousand out of marina over the next three, or ten thousand out of marina over the next three years. You then get to see the funding mechanisms and the funding vehicles on how you're gonna pay for all the CIP plan over the course of time. So, yes.
All right. And that's, that's set there. And then the next page, eighteen, nineteen, is the fixed asset replacement fund that, that Dalton and Kerry put in for this year. And this includes things like, you know, planning for replacement of vehicles instead of driving them until they're in the ground and, you know, and, and as we plan for it, we, you know, we don't have to go out and get loans for a vehicle, we can actually budget for it and plan for that. I added it up, and there's twenty-two vehicles.
Uh, there's actually way more than that. I just put the ones that were the most critical. And that doesn't include heavy equipment.
And however, there's also a fire department ladder truck in this list. That is a totally different ballgame than just a regular vehicle.
There's actually two in there, but yes, so.
I see that, yeah.
Yeah, so, so no, this was, again, the fixed asset replacement fund, honestly, you know, this, this is another quick conversation tonight. This is something that we'll discuss, you know, come, come that timeframe. We did put two new replacement vehicles in the budget, they're already built in.
Yes.
We did earmark a hundred thousand, really just to kind of show y'all what the fixed asset replacement fund would look like, you know, going forward. Very similar to how the CIP would do, just more for, for wheeled vehicles, heavy equipment, fixed assets.
Right.
So, way more discussion on this, in, in a total asset list.
And just, yeah, just so you know that. And I guess my opinion is, I'm really glad to see us doing this. We're plan, we're planning for the few, it's just, it is, it's really.
Waiting until it breaks, is.
Really like it.
And, and surprisingly, as, as common sense as this is, and not a lot of cities do this, especially cities our size.
Well, one thing I want to throw in there, too, you know, talking about the ladder truck, is, uh, I think this is, this is an absolute plus, starting to get that long-range, long-range visibility. If you spec out a truck right now, whether it's just an engine and pumper, whatever, a ladder truck, you're looking at more than two years from the time you complete the ordering process to get that vehicle delivered. So, it's just, it's.
At one point six million dollars.
Yeah, at one point six million. Of course, that's brand new, but, yeah. So, you know, it, I think it's important that we continue moving forward with this program and, and, you know, trying to keep visibility on that, because some of these, it's not, you just don't go down to Johnson Brothers and say, I'll take that, that quint, because they don't have one on the lot.
Okay, thanks, Jim. So, then on, on the next page, it's the hotel occupancy tax. And from what I understand, those are Airbnb's that pay us taxes, and it's about ten thousand a year. And we can, we are legally allowed to spend that on anything that would be a benefit for people who are visiting our city. So, they spent it on fireworks this year, and that was a good, good choice.
Um, and, and real quick, just a, a little contextual history on, on the hotel occupancy tax. Two and a half years ago, two years ago, we brought to council to up from three percent, which was in the ordinance. It was only, they were only collecting three percent of the hotel occupancy tax. We upped it to basically the state max for local governments at seven percent. And really, we identified, you know, that people were putting Airbnbs no matter what, and so, hey, the city gets a portion of the seven percent off of that. So, this was the fir, really over the last two years, was the first time we started seeing the actual hotel occupancy tax come to fruition. And we're still working on the process. We actually have the application process and everything else that, and honestly, it's done really well. I know a lot of the complaints initially were, you know, oh, they're bringing in drugs, they're bringing in, you know, you know, prostitution houses and all this, but what we're seeing is absolutely the opposite from what we're doing. And the industry actually, and at least in Morgan's Point Resort, is kind of regulated themselves, because we have minimal government oversight. It's accountability and enforcement, because there's no good methodologies to collect the payments unless they, we know that they exist, because we have to go to them. And.
Do we, do we issue permits or something, or how do we go?
So, yes, so they have, so we actually have, we actually kind of spearheaded in the area, um, a hotel occupancy tax kind of form. We actually, and we'll send it to you guys, just for awareness, we actually put the ordinances that apply, we put, you know, vehicle things, and they actually have to initial the ordinances, so they fully understand it. And we, we follow up on as far as reporting, you know, calls for PD, and we, we don't get them. We're not having the issues. And the great thing about it is, those things are easily, you can regulate them, because if they make a bad decision in twenty-four hours, they're out.
Yeah.
Versus some of the moratoriums that you had on the long-term rentals, you can't get those folks out. So, we actually are doing, you know, having good success with our.
Yeah, I think when it came up at the council meeting, the guys that were here that were doing the Airbnb's, were very supportive of what you were trying to get done.
It was a balance.
And it was, it was, and, and the people that were whining about it, or making comments about it, I'm sorry. I'm not sure that there, that there was facts behind those complaints.
They were concerned about a potential problem that was not, actually did not play out. Okay.
That's correct. So, so no, the, the city has done a wonderful job, council before did a wonderful job. And, and again, the process that we've done is actually working really well.
I think we have ten Airbnb's in the ci, we may have more than that, but.
I believe we have ten, and I think we have an application, I think we have like two or three in application mode right now. And so, it's a, it's a, it's a process. They gotta go through P and Z, they gotta go to council. I mean, it's, it's, they, they gotta want to do it, and then the regulation side, so.
Dalton, is that what the, so looking at, when I was looking at the, the budget, you know, that's one thing that I was like, wait a minute, revenues ten, expenses ten, that's what that is? So, that ten grand that comes in goes out to whatever we tag it for?
Absolutely.
I was just confused how we were spending ten grand on, yeah.
Yeah, because it is, it is a restricted fund, and, but again, we use, we, for us, we just earmark it for the fireworks, because it's a, a one-for-one. But if it ever increased, then we can, we would have a breakdown of what that looked like.
Yeah, I, I like that.
It seems so low, honestly. I, I was doing the math just now, so, you know, our house was struck by lightning, and we were in Airbnb's for like almost three months, three months, a little over three months. And like, not all of them were in Morgan's Points, but I just did the math, and I'm like, man, our bill was pretty substantial. And like, so, just our one little three-month stay in Airbnb's, it's like, you know, a third of, of that amount collected.
Yeah, six percent goes to the state, seven percent goes to the, the city if they have it, and then if a county has an expo center, two percent goes to the county.
Crazy.
Yeah. And we have one Airbnb, I think quarterly does about twenty-two thousand a quarter. That's just one. So, we, we do, we do struggle sometimes with the enforcement piece, because there's a lot of challenges with the VRBO, short-term rentals, STRs, where the state automatically collects them, but the cities have to go to.
Plan for them?
No, we can't even, they don't even have the process in place for them, because there's so many different ones. So, that's why the application process helped us get accountability of them. And so, it, it's, it's a challenging process that everybody's working on.
So, how do you do that? And I, I don't want to keep us here any longer.
Basically, we now have their information, and you're gonna pay.
Yeah. The, the, I think the idea that, at least from the guys, the, the people that we're talking about who own the Airbnb's, I mean, just buying a house out here isn't exactly the cheapest thing you can do. So, they've got a few hundred thousand dollars invested in that, so they're not gonna be screwing around. I mean, it's not like putting a tent up in your backyard. Sturgis more than bike week.
Well, and so.
You know, you've, you've really got it. And of course, and, and I, I don't know about you guys, but it, it really irritates me when I go into a town or someplace and I get a hotel room, and it's a hundred and fifty bucks or whatever the hell it is. And then you walk out the door, and it's two hundred and a quarter, because everybody and their brother's getting a piece of the action.
Yep.
Because you're not gonna bitch about it, because you don't live in that town. And everybody does it to everybody.
And that was the.
You know, it's just kind of one of those little.
Yeah, and that was the proactive approach that we wanted to go into this, was, we wanted to create minimal government oversight with it, and we wanted the industry to regulate itself. We wanted them to, and, you know, take pride in their investment. So, if we ever did have to turn down a permit for some reason, or turn down an application, it's because nine out of the ten people who are, are in the process and investing, they're like, no, 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 they're bad for business. We want to work with the city, not be against the city. And so, it's, it is a collaborative relationship that we have.
If you think about who's gonna be doing it, it's not, they're, they're smart business people.
Yeah.
They're not sleaze.
The last thing on this was, currently not in the discussion, was brush bins and quarterly cleanup. And we've already talked about those things. And so, I do think if we wanted to assure that we're only serving Morgan's Point residents, we could ask them to bring a water bill, and maybe we'd give volunteers to sit at the gate. It's only four times a year, you know.
Yeah, I think you could, but, boy, do you want to get in a punch-out fight with somebody?
No, and we can, and we can definitely, that, that could be a mid-year discussion.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. If we really think that we're being abused by other people coming into our city.
I know we are.
Which it sounds like, okay.
I know we are.
Okay, so, so then, you know, we might want to have to invest a little bit in enforcement to keep the service for our residents.
And well, we can talk about that, too.
That's not unreasonable.
I, I know a good office manager position that could help do that at.
I, I know, I, 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 I'm curious, too, about the brush on Saturday.
Yeah.
Right? Like, because that's a, that's a beautiful, a beautiful thing that we have. How much does that cost us, the city, other than just that compensation for altering?
Yeah, so what, it doesn't cost the, anybody who drops it off, as far as like the burning in-kind, you know, labor.
I, I know that it costs the citizens. I've been dropping brush there for years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, as far as an actual, as far as an actual marginal cost of what it costs, we don't have that. We just, we.
Because I know people are abusing that, too, now.
Yes.
Because they know, they know, oh, man, if you drive to Morgan's Point, you can go dump it, you don't have to pay for it.
And if you go anywhere else, you're paying more than thirty, fifty bucks to drop some, you know.
So, I took stuff to the dump in Temple, and it was fifty-two dollars.
Yep. So, and so I think even if you took it and said, hey, twenty-five bucks, or, you know, figure out like a residential pass, you know, where, you know, they, you know, every year you get a water bill, and you get a sticker or something, you know, yeah, people are gonna abuse it. So, there are things that we are looking at.
Well, and if you live in Temple, you can go to the dump, like, I think once a month you're allowed to take a load.
Yeah, and so we can basically say, if you ain't got a sticker, you're paying, you know, thirty bucks. Or, you know, so, we could talk about that later.
It wouldn't take very long before people who don't have a sticker are gonna go someplace else.
Or they're gonna come in for thirty bucks, and we get a little bit of revenue stream, because it's cheaper than fifty-two.
Yeah, that's fine, too. Page twenty-one is the holiday schedule for the year, so this is for all the staff here in Morgan's Point.
I noticed that Festivus wasn't on there.
Festivus?
It should be, yeah. So, this is basically federal holidays, right?
Yeah, so it's, every year it's thirteen, thirteen holidays. And then, so just to clarify on the September eleventh one at the bottom, the public safety one, that is not a guaranteed day. It just means that they have the opportunity to take that day, so long as it doesn't impact certain things. So, it is not that public safety gets an extra day. They do, but there are certain requirements under the state law that, that they have to follow with that.
And then I think we, on twenty-two, we've already talked about budget amendment versus budget adjustments, and that, we're gonna clarify a little bit more on Monday as well, right? Okay. So, then, this is the one page that, page twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, this is the one Kerry did for us that was just kind of a big overview of everything.
Yep.
So, I just, I've looked through it several times, and I don't know if you guys, I'm, I'm sure you have as well, but if we look at the increase this year, it's two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand above last year's budget. Two-hundred of that was to roads, an additional on the roads. And we are replacing two vehicles this year.